Give me a moment.
And that's different too.
I've been reflecting it from the county. Over then I talked to one of the, uh, individual, one of board members there. This is no.
All right.
So I'm gonna call the meeting to order, uh, rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment period. Does anyone have any public comments? If not, we'll move on. I'm looking for a motion to approve the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two board meeting agenda.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Discussion?
Madam Chair, we do have one, uh, deletion from the agenda, item number three, which is the approval of the memorandum agreement for the Mississippi Sink Club watershed. Late after, yesterday afternoon, we learned that Bowser may be looking to have some changes to the MOA, so we don't want to approve it and then come back and have to reapprove it. So just pull it from today's agenda.
Pull that from the agenda. Anything else? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, now the consent agenda. Would you like to go with that?
So in today's consent agenda, we have approval of the August second board meeting minutes, approval of the social services county and hospital accounts payable, approval, approval of the promotion of social worker Kirsten Langerman to social services supervisor at thirty-eight sixty-four an hour effective August twenty-first, approval of the promotion of administrative clerk Melissa Gertis to eligibility worker, twenty ninety-four an hour effective August twenty-second, resolution twenty-two twenty-eight, which is the Veteran Service Office Operational Enhancement Grant Program Agreement, resolution twenty-two twenty-nine, uh, off-site gambling for the Cedar Mills Lions Club at the Cedarman's Golf Club. Done club.
Any questions?
So this will be a roll call vote because there are resolutions within?
Correct.
What, uh, I see Tim is here. You wanna get a little synopsis of your grant, Tim?
Sure, that's a ten, oh, yes. I should know that by now, shouldn't I?
Can't hear you.
Yes, you should.
So this is a, uh, a grant from the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, uh, we've had for a number of years. Uh, it's based on veteran population and it's our same amount we received last year, which was ten thousand dollars. Uh, there's certain stipulations to that, uh, and how we can use the grant money. Basically for the van transportation program and the gas associated with that is how we're gonna use that.
Other questions?
It was listed on the front here that county is a veteran population, one thousand four hundred and eighty-two veterans in Meeker County. I found that very interesting. I did not know the number of veterans in Meeker County.
Yes, uh, that, uh, that's based on the, the government statistics.
Okay.
I, I, I think the act, number is actually higher than that. I would guess that it's probably somewhere in the, maybe about eight hundred more than that.
Does that include all realms of the military, including what, National Guard folks or?
They don't capture everything. Um, uh, they, uh, but I think that's mostly what they're missing is some of the, the National Guard soldiers.
Okay.
Possibly because a lot of, for example, like the unit in town here, I don't know what the percentage is, but a majority of those soldiers probably grew up here. That is, that's usually the way it is.
Sure.
And they moved to the cities, for example, so they're not actually residents in Meeker County anymore, but, but, uh, you know, veterans come and go. I would estimate the population to be about eight hundred higher than that.
That's kinda what I've always, yeah, shy at twenty-five hundred or, you know, was.
Right.
I've always heard, I guess, are the number that's always used.
Yeah.
Which is relatively high.
You know, when I, when I ran the math, what is, you're counting about twenty-three thousand four hundred? We have a relatively high percentage statistically speaking. I think it was eight something percent. I can't remember exactly what it was, but that's pretty high statistically speaking, if you look at other counties within the state or regionally outside of the states.
Think that, uh, interesting too, um, how many of those were, you're touching at the veterans office that you're contacted with were probably ten percent? I don't, I have no idea.
You know, it, it's, it's, uh, outreach is a, is a major part of, of, uh, just was in a meeting yesterday and we were talking about how it was related to the transportation program of recruiting volunteer drivers, but there was another company that had a lot of success doing that and, and that kinda ties into how you reach that younger population of, of veterans, especially the, you know, uh, post-nine-one-one veterans. They're not, uh, they're not typically gonna be in the American Legion or the VFW. Uh, how do you reach them? So.
It's kinda, as I recall, it was kinda the same way with the non-vet a few years ago. They did, they, they had their own, yeah, they didn't feel they got treated well, which they did not, and so they kinda gathered in their own places and did, started their own clubs or whatever, and I don't know how, but I think now if you go up to the VA, there's a lot of them that say non-vets that are parking cars and doing things. So I think they've become more active and I think that's where we have to reach out to the Iraqi vets and, um, that's, do you think that's our biggest hole that we're missing?
Yes, when it comes to that, I, uh, Andrew and I have talked about this quite a bit, um, different ways to, to reach them. And, uh, one way is the radio, um, or, or, you know, if maybe you find out about a coffee group, they're probably not the kinda group that's gonna get together for coffee like the Vietnam era. I think actually at Swan's Cafe, they get together.
They do have a group, I think, that gets together, yeah, although one of them has passed.
It's an informal group, so you're right, that, that's.
Subway has a group.
Subway has a group.
Yep, in the mornings.
Okay.
And, um, Woodland knows, has been, and if they still are, they're trying to get, um, a veterans group together, you know, 'cause the suicide rates are high, uh, with veterans that we don't address well enough. And I think at the last meeting, we discussed it a little bit and they were hoping for better numbers than they're getting, but they're gonna keep trying. And it's hard to get people to come in and ask for help that are veterans, I think.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I, like, fire department, we have a vet on there who's, you know, thirty-five years old. He doesn't come to, he's a member of the Legion, but he doesn't come. And, yeah, I know I should, but he's got little kids.
Yeah.
You know, and, but he also have a conversation, you know, of some of the struggles that he goes through too. So they, they've been exposed to some things and it's just trying to get them engaged a little bit.
And I, and I think that those things have changed because of the, when I was manager for thirty-some years, everybody came to the Legion meeting, the guys, and had some beers after and visited and the way thing, people operate now is different. The guys take care of the kids too. They, you know, it's a whole, it's a whole new way of living and I think that affects things, like you said, they have kids, they're busy.
Till I was forty-five, you know what I mean, till your little kids are a little older and stuff.
The pro, the problem is you get the older ones and they pass away or whatever and nobody, that's why the numbers dwindle in those organizations. But that's off the subject.
Yeah, you know, uh, as far as, uh, like reaching out, uh, I haven't done that yet, but going to visit the National Guard unit in town here. Some of those, uh, like I was mentioning, some of those, uh, soldiers in that unit, the engineer unit in town, uh, are gonna be from this area, but I don't know what percentage that is and it changes as they come and go, get promoted, retire, whatever the case might be. So.
But they come, they come from all over to the guard meetings, don't they? It isn't necess, 'cause I remember when the unit left, we did breakfast for them that weekend and th, those guys were from, like, all over. It wasn't just Meeker County.
Correct, and, and part of the reason that is, if you take, say, for example, there's a hundred soldiers here, I don't know what their, their size of the unit is here, but not all those soldiers are employable for whatever reason, family reasons, medical reasons. And then, so they draw from even outside of.
Other counties that they deploy with.
So they, they come typically from all over the state.
Sure.
Uh, and a lot of cases, and, and I would guess statistically speaking, what is the population of the Twin Cities metro area? Seventy percent of the population of the state. I would bet that probably seventy percent of that unit are right around there is probably from the Twin Cities metro area.
Yeah, it's possible. Any other questions?
I, I just found that interesting, but then when you read this and it says that based on population, I'm hopeful that the actual number of veterans within Meeker County is accurate if the grant fund is based on that particular number. So I don't know how those things can be looked at a little bit more closely, but this is a wonderful thing to be able to get the funds, but then if it's based on population, we wanna make sure that that number is accurate.
And that, and that number actually comes from the federal government, so we have no.
We don't have a way of tallying that.
And the federal government.
They're not gonna tally high.
The federal government is never wrong, so all is well. Thank you, Tim. Any other questions on the consent agenda? The eligibility worker and the, uh, social service supervisor were budgeted replacements, right?
Yes.
Neither one of them was a new position that we talked about. Okay, thank you.
I had two questions, maybe Barb can help me with that or, um, one item was listed, Clifton Larson Allen LLP from July, a billing of sixteen thousand for consulting services. I mean, um, I see things like that come through. I'm curious, how many consulting or auditing, are they actually auditing us?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Burson, CLA, they're the auditors.
Is it auditing?
Yes.
Okay, and is that done several times a year?
It's, it's an annual audit and, but it takes several months to complete.
So it's a one-time payment?
No, it's not a one-time payment. There, we pay for the service as they go.
As, as we go, so it's not even quarterly, it's whenever we get the bill.
Typically monthly.
We used to have the state of Minnesota and we, this was the first year at Clifton Allen Larson.
So there, we have one auditing company.
What's that?
One auditing company.
Correct.
Previous board, voted to switch before we came on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it was a battle, it was a court battle with the state auditor saying they're the only ones that could do it, so some counties took them on and won and.
And if you recall, last year, you approved a contract with CLA to do the auditing, so this is within that contract.
So we decided to shop around. And I think that's a good thing.
Actually, I think by the end of this year, we're gonna have to designate, or, that's right, we're, who we're gonna use.
Yeah, it's a biannual process.
Oh, every two years they have to make a decision as to which company you go with?
Yeah, you do have to rotate occasionally.
Okay, okay, that, I'm, I'm learning. And then, something about the fifth floor, there was twenty-five thousand dollars worth of damage. We paid to Litchfield Building Center for those repairs. Was that when that windstorm went through? And will that be covered by insurance?
Yes, and yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, that was my question too, and does it, do we see our insurance policy bump up though when we, the more we take, uh, in the past? Have we seen that where they'll, like, privately? The more claims you have.
It's her insurance.
Oh, Jesus, mine. You're so cheap down there, they get you wherever they can.
I mean, the, the answer ultimately is yes. The more that we use the pool's resources, the more that, that we have to pay into the pool. Certainly. It's not necessarily a direct correlation of we spend twenty-five thousand dollars this year, some of the years it costs us twenty-five thousand.
No, I wouldn't think that.
I think it is. That's all my homeowners.
Yeah, I don't know. It, it feels that way.
The workman's comp sure feels, we're always careful.
Feels that way, but I don't usually.
What we turn in.
I don't usually feel, so.
I know. You're not the really kinda guy. Anything else? Julie?
That's all I had.
Those were my, my three comments.
We're working pretty hard to get through this consent agenda.
I know, so I thought we were gonna have a meeting.
To fill space, 'cause Greg not be here.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna look for a motion to, um, approve the, uh, consent agenda.
Who's the consent agenda, Madam Chair?
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bretisson, and we will look, any more discussion? Cory, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretisson?
Yes.
Commissioner Olbert?
Yes. Now we're gonna reset, do I need a, I can never remember. Do I need a motion to recess the county board? Or can I just recess the county board? I'm gonna recess the county board and convene the county ditch authority at this time.
Yeah, we pulled that.
We pulled this.
Yep.
Why, which was, you don't want? John, I have a few, uh, ditch items. The first one will be to set a public hearing for joint ditch seventeen. A little background on joint ditch seventeen. The findings in order, um, request for Rich and Engen and the soil and water conservation district was to modify a portion of joint ditch seventeen, and that was approved back in October of twenty-twenty. Subsequent to that, there was construction on branch two, and when that was, I was exposed, it was discovered that the elevation and that their plan was not going to be able to be executed or even, um, lawfully constructed, and therefore we were going backwards on this particular easement and project. So at this point, the recommendation from, uh, Kail to guide us through and rectify this situation was for the commissioners, and you're acting as a joint ditch seventeen, so those of you that are on seventeen will be voting. We did talk to Ken Yohai and Mr. Anderson was, uh, they were being done by our county, um, representatives, because you will be in the majority, and you will be setting a public hearing to which that will be September twentieth at nine AM here in the county boardroom to consider rescinding that previous order on joint ditch seventeen. So the action today is not actually rescinding the order. Kail will be here to help us do that, but just to set the public hearing for the time and day that I've asked for.
So you're looking for a motion to set the public hearing for September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, in the boardroom at nine o'clock?
And the voting commissioner is on seventeen.
And that's everybody but?
Danny.
Danny.
Madam Chair, so move.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bretisson. Any more questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The second item we have before you is.
I have a question. Why isn't, why isn't Danny?
Cause he's not, he's not located on that ditch.
It's divided, it's a joint system, so it's the closest commissioners to reach that maximum based on the percentage of the value. So there's one commissioner in Ken Yohai on seventeen and we have four. And therefore the furthest out, which would be Danny, is not involved.
That's pulling some strings, Julie.
Is that Commissioner Anderson's district in Ken Yohai?
Yes. And he gave us permission to set the public hearing today.
Okay.
Without his presence or knowing that we have form for that. Moving forward on County Ditch fifteen, County Ditch fifteen before you will be to acknowledge some petition and inspection reports and also to make some very specific motions as outlined by Kail, and I'll walk through those just a little bit. So we did have an informational meeting, uh, two weeks ago that, um, gave the landowners on County Ditch fifteen an opportunity to see what the repair report was going to look like. That was very, um, informal. So at this point, to bring us to the requirements on County Ditch fifteen will be for us to acknowledge a petition. We've had a petition for some time from Mr. Dolman. We've also had informal requests for work to be done on that system. We also have repair maps, which John is going to review so that you have an idea on the extent of repair that's likely coming here. And then also we have the County Ditch fifteen full inspection report that has been performed on this system. Once the, these steps are taking place, then, uh, Joe is expected to formally file his repair report with the county auditor, at which time I have an obligation to come before you and set the date, time, and location for that particular public hearing to happen. Along with that report, John and Joe will be presenting some cost estimates and some phase or potential phase plan so that the landowners on that system have, um, opportunity at the public hearing and also they did, um, recently at the informal meeting to guide that process for them. With, with that being said, I did pre-look at some dates for both Joe and Kail to be available and also some commissioners, because this will be a public hearing at which you will accept that repair report and then turn around, I believe, and, um, approve it. And I was looking at September twenty-seven and twenty-nine. Kail, look at your calendars, I don't know if that works for you as well, because Joe and Kail are both capable. So at this time, I think we'll let John walk through the repair maps that he has before we talk about the motions that we're asking for.
So I prepared a few just general repair maps, just to kinda give you a, a rough idea of what I am anticipating that needs to be done out there. The first couple are like the tree removal. Um, so I got the green highlighted, is partial tree removal, essentially on one side, and a lot of this is coming from feedback from landowners. Um, some at the informational meeting, some just, I've talked to them personally already. So like in the green is partial tree removal, um, so cyclically trees getting removed on one side, you know, potentially leaving a couple of little bit nicer, bigger trees. Um, the blue is tree removal on both sides. Some of what's influencing, um, both sides is there are some spots with erosion occurring on both sides and to be able to repair some of those areas, you need to be on that same side of the ditch in order to actually fix them. It'd be, it works a lot better to have the excavator on the same side, so that's why some of these areas we're doing both sides just in fact that we need to be able to get on both sides and we want to just clean out, um, the downed green stuff. Um, so yeah, this is the, that's the second half, more of the upstream half of the ditch. More of the tree removal. So recently being, was rather dry out this year again. I went through and did kind of a sediment survey to basically see about how much sediment there is in sections. The very right side is, uh, Colinwood Lake and then you work, and it works its way west. You know, it varies quite a bit, but there are definitely some areas where there's quite a few, there's quite a bit in there. I mean, there's one section where a few areas of sample there is three feet of sediment in the bottom of the ditch, but in a shallow cut of a ditch, that's really significant. But sixteen, eighteen inches is pretty common. And again, when the ditch is only five feet down to the bottom, you know, you're probably talking twenty-five, thirty percent of its capacity right there, so it's now like down in Cosmos where some of the ditches are thirty feet down and you have eighteen inches of sediment, it's not a big deal. But when it's such a shallow cut ditch, it makes a huge difference. And then as you can see, I got highlighted in orange, are the cattail choked areas. Um, again, plan would be is to open these channels back up. It just makes a lot more efficient water flow. It's the same here with this, it's just further upstream. That's just, just kind of a general idea.
No questions on this, the three items that we are going to be asking for separate motions, and this is being guided by Kail, is to acknowledge the petition from Daryl Dolman, then to move on and to also acknowledge John's full inspection report. We did share that at the informational meeting. You all have seen a copy of that. And then finally, we are going to reaffirm the appointment of Houston Engineer to complete the necessary repair report, and that's the report that I'm talking about that will be formally filed with our office and move this process on.
I'm curious, when, when was this ditch originally built? Was this the nineteen oh, nineteen oh-four, if I recall?
Right.
And has there been an improvement project on it since?
Improvement, no, because improvement means that we wanna change, repair and clean out.
Yes, yeah, I have to get the right word.
Repair and repair, yes.
And I believe it's only been small portions here and there as requested. It hasn't been like a full-scale repair.
And correct me if I'm wrong, John, some, some of the individual landowners have done some cleanup of their own.
Some have, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
This system's more sensitive because of the wetland areas, and that's why the process has been, you know, slower and very carefully taken care of, so that we don't end up with problems. There certainly is concern once John does the sediment removal of, um, draining some areas that have been wet for some time.
Let's, go ahead.
You go. You go.
Uh, what's the history behind the Dolman petition since it was filed three years ago?
Right, so.
Why are we acknowledging it now rather than?
We feel that it hasn't been formally acknowledged. We are well aware of the repairs that are needed and the repairs can be ordered by the commissioners based on, um, inspection reports, but also we do need to acknowledge any petition being by a landowner. He formally made that petition in two thousand nineteen. Subsequent to that was the redetermination of the system, because it was also in that general timeframe of two thousand nineteen, where it was decided that the correct landowners were probably not paying the correct proportions. So we did the redetermination, which also then led to the fact with the redetermination being difficult, and I think some of you sat on boards where we brought back, you know, we probably can't restore this back to the early nineteen hundreds. And so then there was the, um, realignment and reestablishment of the records. So those two steps took place, and therefore now we're formally acknowledging that petition. That could have been acknowledged in two thousand nineteen, right, with those steps. Very definitely was in discussion, but there was no formal motion, and Kail is indicating that he wants to see a formal motion on that as well.
One of the sad things, Danny, is, is we've run up two hundred thousand dollars already on this project. So these landowners are gonna have to, we haven't even started repairing.
Nothing's been done really, except for some.
It's been a very, very difficult and very long process, especially with the redetermination, which was petitioned by the landowners. And they have every right to do that when, you know, there's inequity and we certainly call that request.
And this is the ditch where a lot of DNR property is involved? Is it DNR or fisheries or?
It's not DNR property, it's like DNR public water basins, just they have regulatory over it. Yep, so they, they can say, you know, we can't lower the water levels by two feet or something like that. They don't actually own the property, but they have regulations over it.
And, and I'm confused about that, because if, if a portion of this goes through what is considered public waters, then that stretch of the ditch cannot help fund the costs of these repairs.
No, there's no.
There's no landlord.
It's because the DNR is not going to fund the help with drainage going through a well. It's because we're trying to improve drainage. It's, if we're trying to put like a structure on to maybe improve it, there would probably be funding for it. You know, like, the, you know, build levels up, but, but being we're doing drainage, to help improve drainage, there's no funding for that.
I just follow up, Danny's had a good segue there. Um, at that meeting, I wasn't overjoyed with the, the way the, the attorney was presenting, because we were sitting there and he was saying that the County Ditch Authority petitions, and I was like, wait, wait, timeout. This was actually, the first petition was in twenty-twelve and Barb brought me to, I was like, bring me, let me clarify this, 'cause everybody sitting out there was thinking that we were petitioning to clean this ditch, and I was like, uh.
Glad you made that point.
The pitchforks were coming out, so I, I just.
And you do have that authority.
I, exactly, but we didn't initiate.
Petition and to petition yourselves, but that is not what we're.
That room was.
The, the target was remote.
Well, I just, yeah, I wanted to make that clear, that.
Right, and Kail did apologize. He had a medical situation.
No, I'm not.
And so a sub was sent and, um, I don't know that the sub was, is up on our particular ditch system.
The, the majority of this ditch is in Collinwood Township. I think it's just a little piece up into Danny's area, right? Commissioner Schiefelbein's over there by Washington, but the vast majority. And there is large areas of cattails in this area, large areas. And so, um, Mr. Dolman, uh, had me out there to, and he showed me everything all the way up to County Road eighteen. So I had a chance to firsthand, we walked most of the ditch from, uh, Collinwood Lake back to eighteen. And I saw the culverts that are in, to me, they weren't installed correctly. I don't know if that's true or not, but when you look at their slant, their slope and everything, it just does not fit.
That's why we're, like, a lot of the private crossings are just replacing those as part of the repairs, not that they're done correctly. You know, typically that's on the landowner, but being they're on the. You know, typically that's on the landowner, but being they're on the outlet end of a well that you'd have at a set elevation anyways. It's, I think highly advised that we just include that as part of the repairs so that we know what's done correctly. Avoid someone's complaining all they did at.
And if I'm correct, they had two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars invested in this so far.
It's approximately that rate, cause they won't, they asked for a total and, and after that meeting, it was interesting. There was several people that weren't able to attend that did call. We had a few people stop in and receive their benefits so that they knew what percentage they were of the entire system. So it's been a very actively involved group and that's the purpose why we wanted the informational meeting. We didn't want anything, as you say, ordered on them, but worked with them.
And how many, how many landowners are on that?
How many were at the meeting?
I mean, how many are on the?
We sent about three hundred letters.
So there's a, there's, there's a, it's a big one.
There's always inactive ones that, you know, don't react until.
I'm just wondering about what they're gonna be assessed.
Well, and I, and I made the point at the meeting that if you don't know your percentage of assessment, find, you know, come and find it all.
Right, so you know, right, right.
And that's kind of why we're gonna be asked to make the decision, full repair, partial repair. Um, and, and that's gonna be a big one, cause this is gonna be expensive.
Was the number four sixty-eight?
Yeah, I don't see it that much.
It's a big number.
That's the partial, that might be the partial.
I think that's the partial.
That's partial.
So I, I think we have to be really careful on the decision on this, we have to, you know.
Well, and they need to, they need to encourage landowners if somebody called you to find out what percentage, so they can do their own math and figure out what.
Right.
What's coming.
Yeah.
And to remind them, they did have that sent to them, but many of them don't recall earlier. With the redetermination, very definitely need to receive a statement. But we just mailed uh county seventeen and nineteen billings out this last week. That correlation between getting that actual invoice and getting that proposed just isn't there. So we wanna make sure that they understand as we move forward that we're, you know, working in their best interest in some way. What's their best interest when it's coming out of their pocketbook, but hopefully it's going to provide the drainage they need.
Barb, on this particular dish, not that it makes one bit of difference, but how many of the folks live here? Versus owning the land and living somewhere else?
I could, I can find that for you.
I'm just curious.
There is at least, there's two that are right on the ditch that I know do not, they live in the metro, at least two.
And there's several that do go south because there was a lot of concern and that's why I asked at the meeting when they were at the meeting and where. Because um earlier they didn't want us to do this in January, February because they would have to fly back. We can't ask people to do that either.
So the two hundred and twenty-one thousand or whatever has been spent so far, has that been already allocated out to these?
Yes.
So they, they?
Up until the repair report, which is probably thirty to forty thousand. I believe anything under about fifty thousand has gone out in previous billings. Or incremental billings.
You'd think they would know their percentage once they got that anyway, once they got the bill.
Does it say that on their tax statement?
It doesn't go in the tax statement unless they choose, but when it goes to the tax statement, it's purely a number.
Oh, okay, so not a percent.
Form, they receive an informational sheet, a redetermination and they receive a listing of the bills and their percentage and what's.
No, I.
When they fill out. So we build in November, they do have some idea of what's percentage is.
Okay.
When they get their tax statement, this is just from my own information, is there a line item that says ditch repair or how is that phrase?
It does say county ditch on there and then the dollar amount. It's very, very brief when it goes to the tax state, if they choose to let it go there.
Okay.
So you're looking for three motions.
Yes, Kale has one for us there.
Separate, three separate motions. Does anybody have any more questions?
Madam Chair, move to acknowledge the petition filed by Daryl Dolman with the Drainage Authority on April first of two thousand nineteen. For repair on County Ditch fifteen and Branch six.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by uh Commissioner Shifelbine, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, move to acknowledge March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, full system inspection report for County Ditch fifteen.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Shifelbine, second by Commissioner Johnson, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, one more.
Move to make determination based upon all rec- record of proceedings that the drainage system needs repair. And to reaffirm the appointment of Houston Engineering Inc. to complete the necessary repair report under Minnesota statute one oh three E point seven fifteen subdivision two.
Hear a second?
I'll say.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Schmidt, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So to finish this conversation, I will send a notice out to each of you regarding the twenty-seventh and the twenty-ninth. And telling you that the History Center is not available at five o'clock, one of those two days will be chosen.
The twenty-seventh of?
Of September.
I was, I was looking at, I was gonna say that's a Saturday. I'm not coming.
Tuesday or Thursday. And then um at the next meeting, you'll expect us to um acknowledge the full and full repair report.
And those, both those meetings are gonna be a DASL History Center, correct?
Yes, I, I did ask the uh people that night. Asked the people that night where they wanted that to happen and that was um pretty vehemently the majority.
Now, we're looking at two meetings or just one on either of the rates?
But Joe and Kale have given me those two as available dates the last week, our last part of September. So I'm hoping that we can make something work, they'll, otherwise I'll have to go back and work with those two to find different dates.
All right.
Kale will be available?
Well, he's going to the last, so I can't speak for him.
You know, I.
It, it happened.
Yeah.
He's apologized for that, but he had a medical situation.
All right, anything else? Not all, during the County Ditch Authority and reconvening the County Board, thank you guys. Andrew Letson, County Administrator, plenty of remodel funding.
Yes, so uh first off, I want to introduce Chuck Upcraft, he's from uh PFM. He is our bond consultant who will be talking to us a little bit today about what that bonding process is gonna look like. Before we get into that though, wanted to give you kind of the outline of where we're at as far as fund balance and the cash that we have on hand. Because of course that discussion drives how much we would then need to bond to cover the cost of the project. So uh as we've talked about in the past, the Office of the State Auditor does recommend maintaining a fund balance between thirty-five and fifty percent of revenues. Or five months of expenditures. At the end of twenty twenty-one, our unassigned fund balance, so this is money that is not restricted or, or assigned for other uses. Uh, in the general revenue fund was ten million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars. Looking at those different categories or those different ranges, our un- unassigned fund balance, what we should be having. If we have thirty-five percent of revenue is about four point eight million dollars. If we keep it at fifty percent of revenue, it's about six point nine, almost seven million dollars. So that means excess, this, this is money that's above and beyond what the Office of the State Auditor recommends that we keep on hand. Is, you know, five point nine or three point eight million, depending which of those two metrics you want to pursue. Alternatively, we may decide, because we have other expenditures that we know are coming down the pike. That we want to, you know, retain some additional fund balance for and therefore bond a little bit more. If, you know, for example, we wanted to keep it at sixty percent of revenue rather than fifty percent of revenue. That gives us that additional ten percent cushion of excess fund reserve for other future expenditures. That means we'd wanna hold on to about eight point three, eight point four million dollars. It would ha- leave us with about two point four million that's available in excess reserve for the facility project. And we would still have about one point four million dollars that we'd then be able to use for other types of expenditures that would normally come out of the general revenue fund. Other capital expenditures, you know, even um, you know, other operating expenditures trying to buy down the levy over time. In addition to this, we do have other cash that's available, uh, that we've already identified for this project. In the Human Services Fund, we have a million dollars. And then out of our Capital Projects Fund, we have the, the money, the proceeds from the sale of the seven oh one Sibley property earlier this year, two hundred and forty-five thousand. And then the balance of our American Rescue Plans, which is at two million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. So that leaves us about just shy of three point seven million uh in other cash, in addition to the cash from the, the general fund.
Andrew, did we designate, we had a refund from MCIT. And you, I think, had sent out an email saying, did we wanna designate that to something?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly discuss, you know, as part of the budget process, whether or not that's something we wanna designate towards that. Um, whether it's for this or whether it's something that's, you know, in the budget for next year. I think what you will see, I mean, next week, we're gonna be talking about the budget as a whole. Certainly this conversation ties into that larger discussion. Uh, but what you're gonna see is that in order to get a, a modest levy increase. We had to use a, a fair amount of fund balance in order to make that work. So that money that uh refund that we got from MCIT would roll into that.
Yeah, one hand or the other.
Well, another topic we've talked about, um, the hundred and fifty thousand ARP money that we earmarked for uh. EDA or, I don't know, I, I guess we're struggling with the, whether that's the best use of funds. Um, to have it in there, so we're looking at maybe bringing that money back. And that's something we can talk about next Tuesday too, but just put on, on the radar.
But that was not part of this, three point six million, that's part of the, the budget discussion. Both of those things are a part of the.
Okay.
So that'd be similar to that.
So you give us and now you're gonna take us away, is that what you're saying?
With the new numbers, yes. Publicly speaking, that's the way it looks anyway.
Yeah.
But that was designated when ARP was kind of pinholed in terms of specific items that you could spend on. And then of course, once remodeling went from six million to twelve million, you know, just because of the cost. That changes that.
Well, EDA has some money.
Yeah, one of the challenges we got there were still negative on the, on the operating budget. And that's something at like seventy thousand dollars, so we have talked about taking like fifteen thousand a year up in that budget. So that, cause our rise of cash, there's two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars left, we can only do that for so long. We're gonna have to make up that gap, so we're trying to fill that, so.
Okay. So this'll be a discussion next week.
Yes.
But something.
Something to think about anyway.
Next few days anyway.
That would have an impact on either the bonding or the levy or the general fund.
Yeah.
It's all, um, same thing, so.
I have a question to the EDA in reference to the South Ramsey property. If we were to sell that piece of property and struck EDA to vote to sell that property. Could that money be put toward them to help fund with this project? Instead of giving away.
Motion to donate that property?
No, it's been given to the EDA.
I'm asking Andrew.
Yeah, that's here.
Yes, that was the, the action the County Board has taken.
Thank you.
An actual motion?
It was a resolution.
Resolution.
That was adopted by the board, was to, was to um transfer the property to the EDA.
But with an actual intention attached to it?
I think through the discussion that the County Board had, the intention was made clear.
We.
Discussion.
And the EDA, when we approved it, we approved to be the facilitator, not the holder.
You're the facilitator.
We're just gonna facilitate the process.
Does the EDA board have to vote on that yet?
We voted to facilitate.
We voted to be the facilitator if the county voted us to be the facilitator.
Ultimately.
Think, I don't know, that, that language seems a little weird.
So we're, we're, we're very much veering off of topic here.
Let's get back to.
My intent say is that the EDA now owns the property and the EDA will have to follow the process that it needs to follow in order to sell. To transfer the property, sell the property, yes.
So they could still sell it?
Ul- ultimately, they need to follow their process.
That wasn't my wish when I made the vote, so then I would wanna bring it back here. My wish when I did that vote was the intention that it was gonna go to Ucap to build four homes or three or whatever.
It would go back further than that because that was the intent of the maker.
That was the intent on the hospital board at the same time. So if we're gonna have that discussion for another day.
EDA voted to facilitate.
Right.
So.
We didn't need another one in there.
Pulling us back.
Thank you.
As you recall, uh, our total project budget, budget is twelve million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You've already approved an architectural contract for seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars that will run us through the entire project. So that means our net budget is eleven point four million. If you look at the different options that we have here, maintain thirty-five, fifty or sixty percent of the general, general revenue fund balance. What you're looking at is either spending that five point nine, three point eight or two point four million dollars on a general revenue fund. We have the other cash reserves, which is the ARP and the, uh, I'm sorry, it's the capital project money that we have plus the human services money. So that's just shy of three point seven, that's the same in each of those different scenarios. So our total amount of cash that we're using, the total fund balance is just shy of nine point six, seven point five or just over six million dollars. And then that drives how much financing we need to pursue, whether one point eight, three point nine or five point three. What I had done is based on the previous discussions that you all have had. We've said, well, we want to, you know, use less of the fund balance. We don't wanna spend everything down to get us down to that thirty-five percent. So what I did is I asked Chuck to run some numbers based on the fifty percent and the sixty percent mark. What you'll notice is the numbers that are in Chuck's presentation are slightly different than mine because I asked him to go a little bit higher. Um, be a little bit more conservative about it and then also that includes the, the fees um that are necessary to go through the bond issuance process. To all the different consultants and attorneys and rating agencies and all those sorts of things that would all fit into the, they would all be financed. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chuck, I'm gonna change it to his slides and we'll go from here. I guess there are any questions about the fund balance part?
Andrew, I just have one question, and this is more, you know, when we originally passed the budget on this particular project. We were at kind of an all-time high in terms of the costs. And, and when you mentioned the other day that, you know, you saw lumber costs that were drastically dropped sixty percent. Is there any way they can retabulate that what the new projected costs would be based on some of these new numbers? Cause it's such a big difference between then and now, which is very unique.
Well, I would say where we're at today, being a month out from, or six weeks out from when that project budget was approved. I would say that while the architects could probably make some adjustments, they haven't, there haven't been projects that have gone through a bidding process yet. So while we're seeing that there's a reduction overall in the market, we don't know how that's gonna truly translate. And we're still looking, you know, six months out now, seven months, eight months out to when this project is bid. As we go through the design process, that number will be refined, I believe, two more times before we get to the bidding process. So there'll be opportunities through the process in order to reevaluate that number and determine, is this still truly the budget?
And while that also, and as far as Chuck's part goes, will that refine what we are bidding out for bonding and to then?
This will lead into Chuck's presentation because.
So did I hear you say materials are dropping?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Before we get too carried away, last week lumber went up twenty-two and a half.
So maybe not then.
Fi- um, futures, lumber futures.
Futures.
Got it.
Or futures were done.
Okay.
Any other questions about fund balance before I turn it over to Chuck?
Completely confused.
Good, uh, good morning, I'm Madam Chair, members of the board, I, I'm Chuck Upcraft, as Mr. Letson said. I'm a representative of public financial management. Uh, we have worked with the county for many years, whenever you have issued debt, which of course has been uh, been, not very much recent. You have very little debt, which is, as I'll expand on a little bit further in the, in the presentation. Is, it's obviously an important credit factor when getting credit ratings when you should get on the public markets. But our, our little presentation here is just gonna go through briefly uh. Uh, and, and maybe some of you are not familiar with the process because it, it, it's been such a long time since at least you issued debt through the public markets. So we'll go through this uh and uh we'll spend more, we'll spend more time on, on the important parts. But uh, as the title says, financing options for capital improvement projects, okay? Uh, this is just a, a brief description of the current project. So uh, uh, when and if you issue debt, and it looks like you're going to be issuing some at any rate. And that's essentially, I guess, going to be determined by your decision today on how much of the fund balance you want to commit to the project. Uh, th- this is of course a description of the project and I know you're all very familiar with that, so we won't spend much time there. Uh, the next slide, the financing options when you're, when you're contemplating a, a major capital project. And we just listed the three basic methods, uh, what's called pay as you go. Uh, you, you pay out cash on hand, expenses as they are incurred and there's no debt involved. Use of fund balance, if you commit uh fund balance for the entire project, again, there would be no debt involved. And the third, and, and obviously the most common one for major projects, issuance of bonds, and of course, that's what, what we're going to be talking about today. Uh, and, uh, and the, uh, and we've listed the pros and the, and the cons. The pros is you lock in current interest rates to the project. And, uh, and, and, although, uh, I think you're all aware that interest rates have, have gone up significantly in various, in various of the fixed income markets, uh, treasuries and so on. But still, in the municipal market, interest rates are still at, uh, over the long term, at, at a very low level. So, we're still dealing, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit further on, we're still dealing with, at least on a historical pers- perspective, we're dealing with very low interest rates in the municipal bond market. Uh, and the con, uh, well, the, the debt is amortized over several years, so that's, I suppose, that's one of the con. The major con, of course, is there's a tax levy increase. When you issue bonds, you have to, uh, you have to levy taxes to pay the debt service on the bonds. By the way, if I go too fast, and if any of you have questions, I'll.
I have a one question, uh, just using the use of fund ba- balance versus the issuance of bonds. Couldn't you conceivably, in the fund balance part, levy for just the principal? What is the disadvantage of just levying each year for the principal, as though you had bond out without the interest and called it that? Versus actual bonding and then having interest, period?
Uh, I'm not quite sure I understand what your question is. If, if you were incurring debt, and if you're paying debt over a period of years, that is to say you're amortizing the principal amount.
Yeah, never mind, I just answered my own question. Sorry.
Okay, good.
But what you're saying, Danny, is pay the principal and use the fund balance to pay the interest?
No, I think he's saying not to borrow anything, but it won't work, because we're gonna pay for the project.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I know what you're saying.
Do we have an idea of what percent county would pay and how many years the loan, I, I think.
I bet he's gonna get to that.
That's coming down the road?
It's down the road, right.
Yes.
Okay.
We're getting there gradually, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and thi- thi- this is, this is basic, what is, what is a municipal bond, of course, is just, it's just a loan by another name. The difference, of course, is this is a bond issued by a municipality in the public markets, rather than, let's say hypothetically, a mortgage loan or, or another kind of loan. Uh, the, the primary feature, of course, of municipal bonds is they're tax exempt. And if they're issued for a public purpose by a, by a public body, as the county, of course, is. And that's one of the reasons you pay lower rates, uh, than you would for, say, a mortgage loan, of course, because the, uh, the county is a better credit risk than most individuals, and because the rates are lower, because the bonds, the interest on the bonds is tax exempt to the older of them. Okay, on number five, this, this is a, a listing of the most common types of projects, uh, for counties. Capital improvement bonds is, and one on the top is, is, uh, by far the, uh, the most common form of financing by counties. It's, it's what, uh, what you're contemplating. Any bonds you issue for this project would come under that category. Uh, and just, just as an aside, you can see about five, four or five down, uh, watershed district bonds and drainage ditch bonds, and just overhearing, of course, your, your prior conversation, uh, at least in, let's say, this more in the, in the southern part of the state where agriculture is more important. That, it's, they're, it's, that's very common to see, when they have major ditch projects, it's very common for counties to issue this type of, of bond, because, uh, because of the cost. So, anyway, that's just an aside from your prior conversation. So, because the bonds that you will be issuing for your, your current project are capital improvement bonds. And if we go to the next one, uh, bond issuance authority, this is all defined in Minnesota statutes. Uh, and it's, it's very precise, the top bullet point.
Now, this is the.
List all the types of projects which can be done through this capital improvement bonding process. As you can see, there are, there are very many, and, uh, your project gets nicely into these categories. On the, the basic, uh, elements of bonding for capital improvement projects by counties. See, the second bullet point, you have to complete a five-year capital improvement plan. And as I said, these, these are all requirements which are listed in the statute, uh, uh, for issuing this kind of bonds. Then, the third bullet point, you need to publish a notice of intention to issue bonds and a notice of public hearing. There has to be a public hearing, and the notice on the public hearing has to be between two and four weeks prior to the public hearing. And this is, the, the, uh, second bullet point from the bottom is, is sort of the catch in the whole process, that if, if, well, I'll, I'll go through it more gradually. Uh, if a petition with five percent of the votes is ca- cast in the last general election, within thirty days of the public hearing, then an election is required. If that doesn't happen, then you can just go ahead and issue the bonds without an election. Uh, as opposed to, say, for example, school districts, whenever they commit to a major project, building a new school or whatever, there's always an election. Well, this capital improvement plan process is a way to go, is a way to issue bonds for major projects without having to, to conduct an election beforehand. But as I said, the catch is that if you get that petition with five percent, uh, and the number of signatories to the petition has to be at least five percent of the votes cast. Uh, this is what, in the, in, in the, uh, language of the process, this is what is called a reverse referendum. That although there isn't a referendum at the outset, if the petition is filed, then the voters can, can require a petition. Now, uh, I should say that over the, over the years, when, when we worked with many counties on many capital improvement plan bonds, it is very, it's extremely rare for that, for that to happen. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying it, it can happen, but it's, uh, it's, it's very rare. So, that in most cases, when you, when you go through this process, the likelihood is, uh, is that you'll go through the process, complete all the steps, and at the, at the termination of the process, you'll be issuing the bonds. Uh, the, the last bullet point, uh, there's a, there's a requirement in the statute that the annual debt service on these bonds can't exceed point twelve percent of the estimated market value. And, and again, that is a, it's a, it's a requirement in the law, but i- 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 in, in ter- for meager county and for most counties, the, your, your market value is so high that it, it effectively is not a constraint. Any bonds that you would be issuing for this project would be well under that cons- uh, under that constraint. So, if we go to the next, uh, slide, this is just a little, a schematic of the process for issuing capital improvement plan bonds. You can see you start at the upper left-hand corner where it says.
Start.
And then move to the right in the green, you approve the, your five-year capital improvement plan. Uh, and, uh, it, it's part of the process, uh, we can, we can help you in, in constructing that plan. The plan can, uh, the plan can be a major plan, can, uh, including any number of capital improvement, uh, uh, projects, or it can be a limited plan, limited solely to the, uh, to the project you're thinking of at that time. But, uh, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a, uh, a real detailed, uh, onerous project to construct the plan, and as I said, we, we frequently help our clients in doing that. Uh, but you have to have the five-year plan. Uh, then, the second, uh, the second green block at the top, begin the bond process for a five-year C I P. Third block, you publish the notice of the hearing, uh, again, two to four weeks prior to the hearing. And then the hearing, the hearing is both on the plan itself and on your intention to issue bonds to implement the plan. And, uh, so it's, uh, the, the, uh, the notice will specify that, uh, you are going to be acting on the plan and on the issuance of bonds. And the notice will state, the amount of the bonds cannot exceed a certain amount. But, but whenever we, uh, whenever we work with, uh, with the, the form of the notice, uh, it, it's always put at a level so that, uh, it allows for, and it's an approximate amount. So, it allows for the amount of bonds it's applying to, to issue. And then, is, as, now we're on the far right column in the orange, as you go down the second one. Uh, after the hearing, the county board approves the C I P bond issuance, uh, by a three-fifths vote, which, of course, effectively is a majority vote, in, in your case, in most cases. And that's done, uh, at the, uh, at the, at the termination of the hearing. And, uh, the resolutions calling the hearing and the resolution that you'll be adopting at the conclusion of the hearing are, are provided by, by the, by the attorneys in the process. And now, moving to the left, wait thirty days and, uh, for the allowance of the filing of a petition. And as I, as I said earlier, it's, it's, it's very rare, but it's, it's part of the statute, you have to wait. And then, at that end of the thirty-day period, uh, if, if no petition has been filed, then you, uh, go through with the issuance of the bonds. Uh, if, 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 if a petition is filed, you're not committed to having an election. Generally, what happens in a situation like that is, uh, you go back to the drawing board, as it were, and perhaps, perhaps reduce the size of the project, or perhaps reduce the amount of the bonds you're going to issue by committing more cash. But, uh, you're not, i- if the petition is filed, you're not committed to, to conducting an election. If you wanna proceed on the terms specified in the public hearing, on exactly those terms, then, then you are committed to, uh, to having an election. But the, 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 the chief virtue of this and, uh, this whole process, and the reason why so many counties do it for major projects, is you can, you can do major projects and, 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 uh, you see some very, very large projects which are done this way. And you don't have to, to conduct an election, which, as I said earlier, in the ca- contrasting it to school districts. Uh, I'm sure there are a number of school districts in your county have conducted referendums in advance to you for major projects. Uh, they're committed to having an election at the outset, and for this process, uh, you, you're not committed to that. As I, as I said, in most cases, you go through the process, and at the end of it, you issue bonds without having to, uh, to, uh, conduct an election, although the whole, the pro- whole purpose, of course, of having the public hearing, publishing the notice, is if there is significant op- opposition to the project, the public has the opportunity to weigh in and say, no, we don't like this, and, uh, we think that there should be an election. But, as I said, in most cases, that's not the case.
Danny?
Uh, Chuck, one question, on the county board approves with a three-fifths. There could be a conceivable point where some of us, the majority or the ma- minority, whatever. If it's the majority says that's a, that the bond we have is a little too high, and we vote, and we say, okay, the majority says, okay, we wanna use more cash versus bonding, and we t- vote that down. Do we have the opportunity as a board to reorganize and say, okay, here's the optimum number? Because we want this passed, or how, how does that procedure go about it?
It, it's the, as I said, the notice for the hearing and the hearing, of course, itself will specify that you're going to be acting on the capital improvement plan and the issuance of bonds not to exceed a certain amount. So, for example, if the notice said, we're going to issue the bonds not to exceed five million dollars. Uh, and then, for whatever reason, you decide, well, maybe five is too much, you would still, and, and, and it's approved by, by the board. Those resolution, if that resolution is approved by the board, by the three-fifths margin, the majority,
Mm-hmm.
then the board would have the authority to issue, uh, uh, a maximum of, in my hypothetical, five million dollars of bonds. But, of course, you would issue less. You could, so if you wanted, if you changed your mind, second thoughts, or.
So, you can do less, but not more?
Not more.
Okay. Can I answer your question?
Pretty, pretty close, that's what I was kinda getting at, cause I don't wanna have, I think we'll be all on the same page relatively, but just, you know.
Okay. And, uh, this slide, okay, if we can go on this slide here. This is just, uh, it looks a little complicated. Uh, but it's just the, the people that are involved when you issue bonds. You can see the county at the center in the orange, and you would be the issuer of the bonds. You would, um, uh, the, 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 uh, the other bubbles around the county are potential, uh, uh, consultants or entities that would be involved in the process. The major ones are in dark blue. There's a municipal advisor, that's the role we function as. Uh, a bond counsel, bond counsel is a special form of lawyer. That whenever you're issuing bonds, they issue an opinion which cites, uh, states essentially two things. You have the authority to issue the bonds, and the bonds are tax exempt. And, of course, anyone that buys these bonds, that's the reason why they're buying. They wanna know that they're buying a bond, which is truly an obligation of the county, and it's, and that the bond is tax exempt. There's an, an, an underwriter, uh, where there's gonna be one qualification, which I'll go into a little bit later. The underwriter, most of these bonds are sold at public sale. That is to say, we, 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 uh, put a notice out to the world that on such and such a date, meager county is going to be selling, let's say, five million of capital improvement bonds, and we invite any, uh, any number of bond underwriting firms to submit, uh, bids for the purchase of the bonds. And generally speaking, bond, this, this type of bond issued by, by Minnesota counties is the type of, of security which is in, uh, there's a high level of demand. It's not unusual at all to have between five and, and ten, ten bids from, uh, both, uh, regional, local underwriters, and even national firms. So, the underwriter, uh, after the public sale, the underwriter which submits the best bid, that is, the lowest interest rate, purchases the bond issued from the county, and then the underwriter sells the bonds to the ultimate holders of the bonds. The, uh, individual bond holders or bond mutual funds, or institutional investors like insurance companies or something like that. But at the public sale, you off- offer the bonds for sale, the underwriter purchases the bonds, and then after the underwriter has purchased the bond issue, yeah, yes, sells the bonds to the ultimate bondholders. Uh, uh, and, uh, we're gonna get down, and then one of the questions that I, that was, I think, sort of suggested earlier and that, that Andrew asked us is, well, how much does it cost to pay all these kinds of people? We'll, we'll show that, too. All right, the next slide. This is just, uh, uh, for, for almost all of the bonds you sold by counties, they're given a rating by one of the, one, uh, one or, either of the two major credit rating agencies, Moody's Investor Service and S and P Global Ratings. And this, this little chart just shows that, uh, how many of, uh, Minnesota counties are rated by the two rating agencies and the distribution of those ratings. Uh, you, uh, the, the county, well, the county, the county doesn't have, currently doesn't have a credit rating, because you have no bonds outstanding which have been rating, rated. The last time you issued bonds on the public market was, uh, about ten years ago. And, and, uh, you were rated by Standard and Coors, your credit rating was double A, which you can see, uh, triple A is, as you would, as you would guess, is the highest. Double A plus is the second highest, and, and then tri- double A or A A is the third highest. And as you can see, uh, uh, but the, the, a strong majority of Minnesota counties are in the double A category, that is, the three ratings, double A plus, or double A or double A minus. That is the three ratings, double A plus, double A or double A minus, or, or triple A. Very few are triple A. With one, with one exception, all the triple A rated counties are, are in the metro, metro area of course, because they have a large population and so on. But your credit rating was double A, and we've reviewed your current financial statements and all the factors that credit rating agencies take into account when they're issuing a rating. It's highly likely, you can never say absolutely, but it's highly likely that your credit rating would be, would be double A again. You have, you have very strong, you have very strong credit factors. The credit rating agencies take into account a number of factors. The primary ones are your financial situation, and the county, of course, is very strong financially. As, as Andrew said earlier, your, your fund, your, your current general fund balance is seven percent of expenditures. And that's, that's a very high level, and you have strong cash balances. The other, the other major factor involved in a credit rating is the amount of debt you have. And even regardless of how much debt you would be issuing for this project, you would still have a very, compared to other counties in Minnesota and around the country, you would have a very low level of debt. So you would still rate very high on, on two of the primary credit rating factors. Your, your financial situation, your financial strength, and the amount of debt that you're having. So it's, it's, and I'll just, maybe I'll anticipate a question. As I, as I said, your, your financial situation is very strong. You have, you have strong cash and fund balances. And even if you were to use, let's, I'm, I'm just picking a number hypothetically. I'm not trying to suggest that this is what you should do. Even if you were to, and, and of course Andrew has presented the options for how much you want to retain as a fund balance at, as opposed to applying to the project. Even if you were to take hypothetically, spend half your cap, your fund balance on the project, you would still have a high level of fund balance by, by the standards that the credit rating agencies use. So that, anticipating a question we frequently get, well, if I, if I spend a significant chunk of my fund balance, what's that going to do to my credit rating or my potential credit rating? Well, in your case, it's not going to affect it. It would be a consideration of the rating agencies, but they have certain standard levels of, of fund balance that they expect you to, I mean, or that they hope that you would maintain. And even if you were, and again, I'm, I'm not suggesting this. This is ultimately, of course, your decision. Even if you were to take it down to thirty-five percent, you would still have, by credit rating agency standards, a, a strong fund balance. Okay. Again, maybe if you have questions along the way.
When you get to that triple A, does it mean that you are actually having a lot of debt also? But that you're servicing it quite accurately?
Doesn't necessarily mean that you have a, a lot of debt.
Or that you've had debt in the past and you've serviced it? That doesn't-
It means that you have the, that because of your financial resources and your economic resources, you have the highest level, the highest ability to service that debt. And in many cases, as I said earlier, most of the triple A area counties in Minnesota are counties in the metro. And so, for example, Hennepin County, they're rated triple A, and they have hundreds of millions of dollars of debt. But there are others that have a, a lower amount of-
So tax base, they have more people-
They have, they have, they have, of course, a huge tax base.
Gotcha.
Your, your, your tax base, one of the measures that the rating agencies use is the amount of your tax base as a, as measured against the per capita and, and, and debt as a, as a percentage of your tax base. So you, on, on, on that measure, you have, you, you have a, a, a good tax base. Even though you're a smaller county, and obviously your tax base is not nearly as large as a county in the metropolitan area, you still have, in relative terms, you still have a strong tax base. And that again is one of the factors that the credit rating agencies use. Okay. On this, this, this slide, method of sale, okay. And, and maybe we should start with the type of sale, the second major bullet point. There's a competitive sale, and that's what I just described, where you publish a notice of sale and you invite underwriters to, from, in the local area and, and nationally to bid on your bonds. A negotiated sale is the type of sale in which you, you determine in advance who that underwriter is going to be, and then you negotiate with the underwriter. It's, it's very rarely used because, like Mager County, most counties in Minnesota have good credit ratings, and they know that they can attract a high level of bids at a competitive sale. The other type of sale, the third bullet point under type of sale, is what's called a private placement. And that's a situation in which you directly place the loan or the bonds you're issuing with the ultimate investor, for example, a local bank. And in fact, I think it was just last year when, not, not two years ago, you had a bond issued from 2012, which was callable, and you refunded that bond issue. And because it was a small issue, it was, it was placed directly with a bank, with a, a local community bank. It wasn't a bank in, in Litchfield or, or Wexler, or in one of the banks in the area. But it was a, a, a small community bank in Minnesota which purchased the loan directly. And that, that is something that, that we do in situations in which you have, let's say, a, a smaller loan. The advantage to doing it that way is you eliminate some of the costs that are involved with a, with a, with a, with a full-blown public sale. So we do it in situations where we want to reduce some of those costs, and because, because the issue is small, that those costs that you reduce would constitute a larger, a larger percentage of a larger bond issue. So now we'll go into, and I guess the, the first bullet point, the factors that determine the method of sale, the credit, the type of security, the structure, and so on, which is essentially what I just discussed. But, but even if we do, I'll say one more thing on this topic. Even if we do a competitive sale, it's not unusual at all for us to, to make sure that, that the community banks in your area are aware of it, and they're given the opportunity to bid on it. And in fact, in, in, in this part of the state, it's, there, there happen to be a number of smaller community banks which actively pursue tax-exempt debt. So it's not unusual, well, I should say, it's, it's fairly rare, but it's not completely unusual for a community bank to bid and let's say, I'll bid, let's say, Piper, Piper Samba, formerly Piper Jaffray, which is a large, of course, regional investment bank. It's not, it's not unheard of for a small community bank to submit a bid, and they beat out the big guys. It's always kind of, it's, it's kind of funny to see that situation, but, to see the big guys lose. But, but it, it does happen, and, and we make sure, even if we do a competitive bid, it's, we make sure that your local banking community broadly defined has, is aware of the sale and that they have the opportunity to, to bid on the bonds.
Question. Do they ever give these opportunities? Well, they, they give them to everyone, but does just one entity then fund the bond? Or could multiple smaller banks fund?
Good question, and that, that sometimes happens. That the, let's say, two or three community banks form a consortium, call it a consortium, and jointly submit a bid. Yes, they can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And it, and it does happen occasionally. Okay, now if we move to, this is, this is sort of a summary of the whole thing. And so, by all means ask questions if you, if you haven't. We have, we have listed here four scenarios which we have called A, B, C, and D. And as Andrew mentioned earlier, he had requested that we prepare some schedules, and this is the result of the, of the preliminary schedules that we prepared using assumptions about what interest rates are now in, in the bond market. So that, for example, scenario A, you want a net four million dollars of, of net proceeds for the project with the balance of the project being funded with the various sources that Andrew described earlier. The cost of it, and I'll just go right, I'll just go right down the line, and I'll start with scenario A and then do some comparison. The cost of issuance, fifty thousand dollars. Now, fifty thousand dollars is the fees you pay for the people involved in, in the process. That is the fee you pay to us, the fee you pay to, to the bond or, or the bond attorney, the fee you pay for the credit rating. And there's some smaller incidental fees, but those are the primary ones. Fifty thousand dollars would be the cost of issuance. It's all built into the bond issue. There are no, there are no out-of, out-of-pocket costs. So the, the bond issue, you would net, again, I'm on scenario A. You would net four million for the project. The cost of issuance would be fifty thousand dollars, which would be included in the, in the bond issue. The, in scenario A, you'd be retiring the bonds over fifteen years. And we, the power, the power of money is four million in scenario A. The net proceeds, under the heading results, you can see the first row says net proceeds, about four million, one hundred thousand dollars. And it's a little complicated. How do you get four point one million when you're issuing four million? It's a little complicated, and let's not muddy the waters with that. Now, we'll, we'll stick to the basic points. You would net four point one million. The, the true interest cost, the TIC, which stands for true interest cost, which is just an overall interest rate, three point two five percent, which is higher than it was a year ago, but lower than it's been through most of the history of municipal bond issuance. Total debt service, five point two million dollars. The maximum annual debt service, three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And the total interest you would pay would be one point two million dollars. So you'd be issuing four million dollars of bonds. You'd be paying principal and interest over fifteen years. And the total interest and principal then would be five point two million dollars.
So the maximum annual DS is the levy amount each year that we would have to add for the-
For fifteen years, you would be, and, and these bonds are, are structured to, to provide what's called level annual debt service. So the three forty-eight is maximum, but it's, it's, in this case, it's equivalent to average debt service. So in this scenario, and we, 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 in constructing these, we've used fairly conservative rates. So when you actually sell the bonds, that's when the final interest rate is determined, and it, it would be something three point twenty-five, give or take. Your annual debt service would be about three hundred and forty-eight thousand, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's scenario, that's scenario A. Scenario B is just the same, except you're retiring the bond issue over twenty years. And so the major difference there between the fifteen years, as you can see, the interest rate is a little higher. It's gone up to three point four eight, and that, of course, is because the longer you go out, the higher the interest rate you pay. Your total debt service, of course, is a little higher, but your maximum annual debt service, your annual debt service is, is lower because you're spreading it over twenty rather than fifteen years. And your total interest paid is one point six million dollars. You're paying more interest, that's, that's obviously the trade-off. You're paying more, if you go out twenty years instead of fifteen, you're paying more interest, but you're paying less on an annual basis. And that's, that's, that's always the basic trade-off, the basic situat, the basic determination of, of, well, do we want to retire our bonds over fifteen years or twenty years? And, and if you want to be really aggressive, you could retire them over, over ten years, in which case, of course, you'd be paying much less interest at a lower rate, but the annual burden to your tax pay would be higher. Scenario C and D, it's just that you're, the bond issue size would be five point four million. So you would be, you would be issuing more bonds because you would be, be voting less of your current resources for the project. Again, over fifteen or twenty years. And you can see that under the, the row marked TIC, it's about this, it's about the same as scenarios A and B. The, the overall interest rate is determined most of all by the length of the bond issue. But again, because you're borrowing more, your, your, your maximum debt service is higher. It would be four hundred and seventy thousand under scenario C, where you're retiring the bonds over fifteen years. And three hundred and eighty-five thousand or so under scenario D, where you're retiring the bonds over, over twenty years. And again, because, and scenario D, in which you're issuing the highest amount of bonds, and over the longest, of a longer period, the total, the total interest you pay would be high. But, but these are, these are the, the four scenarios that Andrew asked us to run. And we, and we can, of course, before you make your final decision, we can do additional scenarios, additional amounts, or if you wanted to, for example, retire the bonds over, as I said, ten years rather than fifteen. Okay, maybe we should stop here. There's a lot of data on this table. Any questions that any of you have?
So scenario A and B is basically using fifty percent general fund, or gen, and then scenario C and D is using sixty, leaving sixty percent.
Maintaining fifty, maintaining sixty.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yep. So what is those scenarios? You'll, you'll have information on how that affects the levy every year?
Yeah, so a, as a reminder, we have about two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in annual debt service that we're paying out right now on the, the refunded bond that Chuck had mentioned. That expires in twenty twenty-six.
Right.
So that amount, we can then put directly towards this. You know, it, it ranges from, you know, forty thousand dollars up to, you know, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. I mean, if you think of it as every hundred and fifty thousand or so dollars is a percentage point on the levy, it kind of calculates out that one.
Percentage on how much?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Each hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase levy equals about one percent. So, go ahead.
Sorry. Another thing we can do, regardless of which of the scenarios or additional ones that we can prepare for, is that we can reduce the debt service on the new bond issue for the three remaining years in which you're retiring your current debt. So the, you can do it that way too. The effect, the effect of doing that is you'd be paying slightly higher interest because you would be deferring the payment of your principal. But, but if you, if you, if you wanted to bring in a levy increase slightly more gradually, we can structure the bond issue to accomplish that purpose.
Andrew, did you bring, ask Chuck in, in terms of that scenario, like with the waste management sale, how that affects if, if we, you know, bought out some of it, essentially? How much does that cost us, you know?
So you're talking of paying off the bond earlier?
Yeah, we, we just, I, I just wanted to know what that-
If we came into some additional cash?
Exactly.
The idea is we wanted to put that money towards this bond. So we had talked a little bit about this, about, at a certain point, there's a call date. So, we had talked a little bit about this, about, at a certain point, there's a call date on the bond. We can't make early payments on it until the call date, right?
Well, one thing that we didn't put on the chart is that, in, in most cases, the, the standard is what's called ten years. That is to say, if you were to issue regardless of whether it's a fifteen year or a twenty year issue. The standard practice is that for the first ten years, the bonds are not callable. And by callable, we mean that the county has the option to prepay the bonds without a penalty. And at, at ten years, then, then you have that option. You can say, well, we want to prepay the bonds. And generally, that's done when interest rates are lower. And you can, it's like, just like refinancing a mortgage at a lower interest rate. But for ten years, you're, you're locked into whatever the.
It's ten years then basically. And the reason I brought that up is that if we happen to sell next year, how do you figure that into the equation? And I think the answer is you have to figure it in beforehand because you're not going to be able to sell it off. You're not going to be able to buy down your bond.
Correct, yeah, I mean, the, the idea there is, I mean, the first threshold question is, any revenue that came from the sale of the landfill, would you want to put that towards this project? Or would you want to roll that in for other unknown expenses at this point? Other projects, other things that'll come down the line, you know?
Which, which.
Or could be allocated to take care of debt service for the number of years of the money that we got for the landfill?
Well, we also, we talked about paying off the existing debt service.
Yeah.
Because that's over the ten year, you know, I mean, we're trying to balance the levy.
That a possibility, so the.
That's a conversation.
And as a reminder, since we just refinanced, we just refunded that debt last year, we have the, the steps that we still need to follow through on that.
Okay.
But we can't just turn around and pay that off as cash.
What it could do though is make up the difference between keeping fifty percent in your fund balance versus sixty percent. Possibly, where, you know.
Multiple.
You know. I just wanted to bring that up because we were talking about that on budget. And I, I, I knew you said the ten year scenario, but it basically says.
And a way to look at it too is, you know, we, we've used fund balance in the past to buy down levy increases, right? By paying for one-time capital expenses, we can do the same thing when that money comes, if that money comes through, when that money comes through. And without having to dedicate it towards this or something specific, it's, that's now fund balance, we can then determine exactly how we want to use it. It could be used for a specific project, it could be used for a specific expense, it could be used for, you know, paying off certain capital expenditures over a three-year period or four-year period. And, and therefore, we're not, instead of doing a, a three or four percent levy increase, we're doing a two or three percent levy increase if that makes sense.
So that was kind of my concern that I talked to Andrew about. We use our reserves up. It sounds like this year you're using some things to keep the levy down. We do, you know, we have been very good at keeping a very even levy, two, three percent. I do not want to, I worry about that we're going to be going three, five, you know, we don't want to be in that position. So if we use our fund balance up, are we going to be in that position? That's my concern.
But it does keep you, you know, your county in check too, if you keep that fund balance at a certain level. Or you're more frugal with those dollars.
So are we, where are we going to cut then? See, that's.
Not necessarily cut, but just maybe no new programs or something that maybe other counties would do. Not necessarily that either.
I mean, I don't know, that's, I'm just putting it out there because that is.
No, I understand what you meant.
That's my concern because over the years, this county has done a good job of not having, you know, we watch other counties, oh, they were zero, and then two years later, they're eleven. And I don't want to be in that position, so.
I'm, I'm sorry for interrupting. That is, we hear that very often, and not only you, you don't want steep increases, but you don't want jagged.
And we, we've done a, the previous administration, as well as this one, has done a good job. People kind of know what they're going to get. So, that's one of my concerns when we talk about how much.
But you still have a big difference between thirty-five and fifty.
I agree, I agree. And I don't know what the budget is.
And I always rather have more money in people's hands than any government entity.
So what is our current debt service? What are we paying each year on that?
Two hundred and forty-four thousand.
So, on a twenty-year.
So that's one percent?
It's almost the same.
One and a half.
One and a half.
Pretty close to.
And scenario B. Scenario B, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, so it would be just a, a small increase over your current debt service levy.
After twenty twenty-six.
Correct, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Mm-hmm. Now, a- as a reminder, we do have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash in the debt service fund that we can use to pay off those three years of debt.
I see.
That would remain.
Which would, that's what we've been looking at, is trying to keep that levy.
Yeah, exactly.
In that margin, that's, but there's six different ways to do it. And it's which one's the best and which one ain't. For the future, and, I mean, that's the conversation we've been having on.
Makes sense.
Does the fund balance determine the percent of interest rate? I see here the number of years kicks up the percent.
No, the, well, the answer is only indirectly in the sense that it affects your credit rating. And as I mentioned earlier, even if you were to, to draw down your fund balance somewhat, however, whatever you choose, you would still have, by rating agency standards, a good fund balance.
So that percent interest rate is basically based on fifteen years and we're double A period, right? Fifteen years versus twenty, because it didn't matter if it's four versus five point four, we're at the same. That's what you're getting here, right?
Yeah. The amount of money that we take out for the loan, does that determine our interest rate? Or is it simply based on our credit rating and the number of years of the loan?
Essentially, yes.
My question would just be, I mean, you mentioned a ten year is significantly cheaper. Is it, this is about a quarter of a point, are you looking at, do you have a ten year off here?
We.
I don't see that working.
One, we, we, we can easily do one and.
Oh, that's going to run, I just.
It'd be just interesting for.
It's going to be commensurate.
Right, today, roughly speaking, you, you can sort of take a progression. If you're to borrow over ten years, the, the rate would, would probably be low, three percent. And you would pay less interest.
Yeah.
But your, your annual.
Paying that's going to be more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I like the, I like us to keep our fund balance, just, I, I feel more secure, you know, for our people in this county, if our fund balance is, is more secure than to deplete it too far. I just.
That's a decision we'll be making after a work session, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I mean, it, it kind of depends on, you know, question for you today is, what other information would you need in order to be able to make this decision of how much debt would you want to issue? I mean, that's the, that's the big question. What else would you need to know?
I have kind of an elementary question I asked Andy in here. So, is this the cheapest way to fund it through bonding? You know, you say banks get together and buy, so what keeps us from going to directly to a local bank? Is that out of the realm of possibility, or I'm just curious?
Yeah, no, you can, you can, you can do that.
And would that be higher or, or we don't know?
Uh, you don't know, it, I'm sorry, you kind of begged the question. It would be dependent upon, the, the interest rate would almost certainly be higher.
Sure.
But the, the cost of issuance, you can see that in each of these scenarios, the cost of issuance ranges between fifty and sixty thousand dollars. It would be lower because you wouldn't be paying, you would be paying an underwriter fee, you wouldn't be paying a credit rating agency fee. You would probably be paying, well, i- i- in a case like that, you wouldn't have to hire someone like us. We frequently get involved because we can be helpful in those situations, but you wouldn't have to. And you would still incur a, a lawyer, a legal fee because whoever purchases your bonds or your loan, in a situation like that, probably better characterized as a loan. That purchaser wants to know that you really do have the authority to borrow the money. He's got a valid.
I mean, you would probably still have to go through the same process, right?
You would have to go through some of this process because what, what the, what the local bank would be buying, he'd be, he'd be lending you the money, but he'd be buying essentially a capital improvement plan bond. You'd have to go through the process.
I'm just curious, because in the scheme of things, this isn't a huge project. When, when you look at other counties, I don't think this is a big project.
Right.
Thank you for that.
But chances are, because you have less people bidding on this project, you're going to pay more if you try to do it through a local bank, I'd think. I don't know.
I think that would be an interesting book.
The, the essential trade off is, and, and that's a sort of thing that we can help you evaluate. The essential trade off is, when you go through a local bank, you'd be paying a higher interest rate.
Right.
But you'd be incurring less costs, so you have to borrow less.
Right.
But how, how much less? We, we wipe away the cost as a one-time fifty thousand dollars. I mean, interest over twenty years at a higher rate is going to eat that fifty up a lot.
Fifty thousand versus any interest rate at all?
It's, that, that is generally done in the situation.
An increase in interest rate a little bit would just eat that fifty up, period, so.
Well, this is.
Yeah.
But I think we should find out.
So when we went through the, the private placement process last year, I know our cost of issuance was significantly less.
Yes.
And part of that was because we didn't do, you know, the rating agency and, and we ended up getting a local bank. But, part of that was we also had very low debt that we were issuing compared to this. You know, it was one point two million dollars compared to four or five million dollars. And, and that's a big difference, especially for some of these smaller local banks. And so, you know, while we certainly could find, you know, a slightly different interest rate, we may save a little bit on the cost of issuance. I, I think that going through that, that public process and doing the public bidding on it is going to yield us the best costs.
Well, I'm just, I know I was at a, another meeting and had a little discussion, there was a banker there, and he said, well, they have some funds available for, I don't know, it just might be worth a, a ask.
And I've had one, I've had one local bank reach out to me expressing interest in providing financing for our project.
Okay.
Um, and I've forwarded that off to Chuck, and so we've, we've talked about that.
It may have been the same person then.
I have a feeling it was.
I just think we have a duty to explore those options.
Oh, yeah.
If they make sense.
And, and, and as I, as I, as I said earlier, if, if you go through the, I'll call it a full-blown competitive process, we can inform these banks and, and give them the opportunity to bid. And, and it, it does happen that a, a local bank will, will, if you will, outbid somebody like a, a, a big regional investment bank.
So our local entities will be made aware that they have this opportunity to bid?
Yes.
So, I have to, can we take a break, or are you rap- I'm not trying to hurry anything along here. But I want to keep him if I don't have to.
If we, very quickly, the last slide just shows a, a hypothetical calendar, timeline, how we would do this. That, uh, under this calendar, at, at your board meeting, your first board meeting in September, you would approve the, a capital improvement plan. That's, perhaps that's a little bit fast, that you have to construct the plan. But public, and, but, but then you adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing. The public hearing would be first meeting in October. And then we would proceed, we would, we would do, uh, after the public hearing, then that thirty-day period goes into effect. You can't, you can't do anything for thirty days after the public hearing, except that we can, we can be acting and preparing for a sale during that period under the assumption that there would be no competition. And then we could, we could sell bonds in, in December. And then we could close them either in December or in January. And that is determined by, there's a kind of a technical tax issue that I won't go into. But if, I suppose it's pretty unlikely that the hospital will be doing. We've talked a little bit to the hospital about, about some financing for them. And, and I, I, as I understand, it's unlikely that they'll be doing any kind of financing this year.
No, but, but they're going to, I think, do some, but I don't think it'll be this year.
Yeah. And so in, in that case, we would probably close the bond issue, which means deliver the bond proceeds to you in, in this calendar year, calendar twenty twenty-two. And the, the reason for doing that has to do with a, a little bit of a technical taxation issue. We don't know.
Will that change the levy though impact if it is this year? Because then it would affect twenty twenty-three because you're.
So, so that's, that's a good question. If we were to do the sale of the bonds in early twenty twenty-three, would we still have an interest payment in the year of twenty-three? Or at what point does that interest payment go into twenty-four?
Uh, the, you, you are required, not, you're not legally required, but because of, because of market and tax considerations, effectively, you're required to have an interest payment on your bonds within a year of the issuance of the bonds. So if you were, and generally speaking, we haven't include, included it here, but in, in most cases, bonds in Minnesota, this has to do with the tax collection cycle, have payments on February first and August first, having to do, relating your bond payments to the tax collection cycle. And so you, if you were issued the bonds in twenty twenty-three, you're, you would have, you would have, effectively, I think you would have the, depending on when in twenty twenty-three. If you issued them after February first of twenty twenty-three, you would, you could defer that first interest payment until twenty twenty-two.
But if you closed this year because of the hospital next year, what does that do to the levy is my question. Because you mentioned that, right?
So for your first, yes, your first interest payment, if you issue the bonds this year, your first interest payment likely would be on August first of twenty twenty-three. Now, there is something we haven't done, shown in detail here. There, we can capitalize, what the term is capitalize interest. That is, include an amount in the bond issue to pay your first or second interest payment so that it doesn't go on the levy immediately. When you do that, of course, it increases slightly the amount of the bond issue, which increases the overall.
It's just moving money around. You just kick, kick that right out of your fund.
In some situations, it makes good financial sense. So it shouldn't be dismissed entirely, but.
Oh.
But it's, uh, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's not usually done, but there's, there's no reason you can't. And as I said, there are situations in which it makes sense to do that.
See, the part I'm having a hard, and I realize we have to lock this interest in if we're going to do this, but we, we don't need this money January first. We're not even going to, we're, we're barely going to have the detailed plan.
So, he's right.
But, the, the one caveat that we have to figure out is if the hospital bonds next year, then it actually costs us what?
So, yeah, can you talk about the bank qualified versus non-bank?
The hospital, it's.
And it combines, it combines, and you go over to.
Yeah, okay, you.
Yeah.
You, you know that, uh, there is something called bank qualified bonds. Their, the technical term is qualified tax exempt obligations. So that an issuer like the county can, and, and it's not on an issue-by-issue basis, on a calendar year basis, if you issue ten million dollars of bonds or less within a calendar year, the bonds are what are called bank qualified, qualified tax exempt obligations. And, which expands the potential buying, the, the, the potential field of buyers of your bonds, which results in a lower interest rate. And generally speaking, the difference in interest rates is, it varies, but it can be as much as twenty-five basis points, a quarter of a percentage point higher if, for bonds that are not bank qualified. So that if you and the hospital were to issue bonds in the same year, because the hospital bonds would be issued by the county as well, both issues would not be bank qualified, therefore, both issues would pay higher interest rates. If you, if you split it up so that one issues in, in, in one year and, and the other in another year, then the, any issue that was ten million or less could be bank qualified.
And I'm not sure that the hospital would bond for ten million. And I'm not sure that the hospital would bond for ten million. I think they have some money there, anyway, so it's, the best thing we can do is do it this year then.
Well, and then, that that kind of leads to the the broader question of what are the hospital's plans? If the hospital intends to issue debt that is going to push the total amount over ten million dollars. Then it makes the most sense for us to issue in twenty twenty two, so we can ensure that it's bank qualified. If we believe the hospital is not going to, then it may make sense for us to wait until twenty twenty three. We get bid pricing, and then that verifies exactly how much we need to bond. Because you can see the process from beginning to end here.
Because we really don't need it.
The the beginning, beginning to end, the process is, you know, from the the first board action for approving the capital plan. To the sale of the bonds is is three months, plus another month for the the closing and the receipt of the funds.
Can I ask that question?
Yes.
Um, if we did those in this, when we issue bonds, like, so say we waited till January or March to do that, and we didn't know what the hospital was doing yet. Would being ours is under ten thousand, would it be go in as bank qualified, and then later when the hospital does it, like in August or September of next year? Would there, that wouldn't go back and change our rating then at that point, would it? Or how does, how do they work that if you don't know when the intent is?
The, 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 the language in in federal tax code. Is reasonably expect. So it's, I don't think any, i- if if any bond attorney who is issuing the opinion. Knows that these, that these, that the ho- the hospital's plans to issue debt. And so, uh, if you were to, if I'm understanding the question properly. If you were to issue in February and, uh, of next year and say, we're, we're bank qualified, and then the hospital came back later in the year and issued. Hypothetically twenty five million dollars, uh, no, you that, uh, that. The, the lawyers issued their opinion at the time you issue your bonds, and I think that they would say that you couldn't reasonably expect it. That that the county on a composite basis was going to be issuing less than ten million, knowing of the hospital's, uh, plans. To issue debt at some point.
And it's gonna, that quarter percent is gonna affect both bonds.
Well, the, yeah, I thi- I think, I think effectively, uh, the, uh, the hospital's bonds are not gonna be bank qualified regardless. Because it's gonna be more than ten.
But it would.
But it would affect you.
Yes, that's, that's the caveat.
So that, that's why the timeline.
That's, um, otherwise, to Paul's point, it's like, we don't need the money, so the hospital's gotta at least let us know.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four before they just.
As he said, they're gonna bond before.
When we had conversations over the, or I guess, I was gonna say over the summer, it's still the summer. I guess late spring, when we really started this conversation, the thought was that there would be a bond issuance in twenty three. I don't know where the planning process is at this point.
A lot of big things coming up right now, so I don't know, so this might be the best ti- I don't know, maybe have another discussion.
Have another conversation with Kurt.
Back up one slide, would you, please? So what we're gambling, or not really gambling, but what we're saying is we're trying to avoid, um, the quarter percent interest, but. We don't need the money, we won't be using it, but we'll pay the two hundred eighty five thousand in interest or debt service.
But we're pa- we're gonna pay that no matter what, right?
Yes, either now or down the road, yes, I understand, so.
Well, and the hospital could do to the same, be in the same position we are next year at this time, they could be sitting there saying, okay, let's get everything ready. So we issued debt in January or February, you know, versus of twenty four.
They have a plan, so.
The difference is whether, where we levy the dollars, because if it's this year, we have to levy them now.
Correct.
Or if it's twenty twenty three, we don't have to levy them basically until twenty twenty four.
If it's after February first.
Which is what you would do if you did that route, I'd think.
However, you did say we had seven hundred and some thousand dollars. That we could use. So we wouldn't have to levy for it.
But that's gonna impact us a little bit down the road as well, because that money could be used to pay off the existing.
Yeah, that's.
We're gonna have to find that money. It's a, it's a bit of a, 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 yeah.
Conundrum.
All right, I'm gonna have to take a break unless we're gonna wrap it up with.
No, break, break would be all right, we've been here for two hours.
Yeah.
Five minutes would be nice. You've given us a lot to think about.
Do you wanna take a break, and then we can have a little bit further discussion to make sure I have some.
I was trying to avoid having to make him sit here. It's okay.
I, the, the direction I guess I'm looking for is.
It might not be bad, it can take two seconds.
Let's take a five minute break.
Throw it down.
Yeah.
Just a point of interest, I mean.
What I do is I hear, well, I process that later, and that's why I come up with my questions, not now, it's later, so. As normal, you know, I hear all this today now, I'll go home and be on the riding lawnmower or something, processing all this.
Oh, yeah. Lose something in your brain, the neurons, they go, oh, wait, I should have asked Chuck that one.
Ask that question, yes, yeah, exactly.
Well, any questions that you come up with?
I'm curious about this, we have debt that will be paid off in twenty twenty six. And how much of that debt? The maximum we seem to have is two hundred fifty thousand. So how much are we in debt?
It's about a million dollars.
So in twenty twenty six, that will be done. And then, of course, that can be rolled over to help pay with this project, am I correct?
Those money dollars that will come to your left.
Would roll over to here. Now, I'm used to a traditional loan where you have an early payment clause. I could pay off principal, I could pay off interest, I can pay off my loan. Instead of in ten years, I can pay it off in seven, if I came upon some money. But with a bonding issue like this, there is no such clause as an early payment clause, am I correct?
That's, there, there is an early payment clause, but generally, early payment is defined as ten years.
So you, you have to acknowledge the bonds for that ten years, but then after that, you could go, hey. We can pay this off.
Right.
And eliminate. I don't like paying interest. I don't like paying interest, I wanna pay off loans as quickly as possible. But, um, I'm learning that this is a little different process. I appreciated your detailed chart of how it differs from a school bond issue. I was curious if we had to have voter approval of something as a school has to do it. That, I found that interesting.
That's the interest you're all right with, right?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not good with other interests either, Julie, never have been, never will, unless I'm getting it, rarely happens.
Then let's get a high number. Yeah, all right, okay. Where is your main office located? Where did you have to come from today?
Uh, well, today I came from home, but, uh, the office is in downtown Minneapolis.
Okay, okay, so is home between here and Minneapolis?
Uh, no, it's, but it's, it's not much farther, I live in that.
Okay, sure.
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't in to be.
Okay, very good, no, I, I appreciated your charts, I'm a visual learner, I like to have the charts.
Uh, I, I, I am too, so it's, and we, we, we find that it's generally.
It worked well for me. Thank you. All right. My circulation rolling here.
Answer that question.
I know, I needed a break, didn't I?
Ernie drinking all the coffee over here?
I'm still working.
Tim, are you a coffee drinker?
I thought you were gonna get away, and he didn't let you. Are you awake?
Tim, I saw you won best baker at the fair, congratulations.
He did?
What'd you make?
Ginger snaps.
Why don't we have any here this week?
That's what was my question.
Oh, really, you took the credit, but she did the baking.
There's nothing preventing you from making another batch.
I prefer chocolate chip, however.
It is cold in here, isn't it?
No, it isn't.
I'm sitting right.
It's cold in here, I'm always warm.
I knew it was gonna be cold, I thought I should grab my jacket, hit time, and I thought, oh, it won't be cold, but now I'm.
I'm eating some of Paul's blender.
Oh, I thought we were gonna be done early today.
I thought.
Wrong again. You always find things to talk about.
I snuck some of your bears.
Oatmeal curry, I don't think so. Be home by eleven, I don't wanna sit at the house that long, take me to the farm first, please.
Sit at your wife's house that long.
No, my son, or me. Is that too blunt? Are we still on? Sorry, Lisa, you know that, so what I think anyway.
My dear.
Sorry, my dear.
Danny, what'd you do to your mic?
I tried, I don't know, I started chewing on it. Started talking interest rates, and I went to nuts, you know, it's like, oh, holy crap, what?
Oh, that's funny.
Because that.
Oh, goodness, okay, we're back, I think, huh?
I did this in case the committee updates. I haven't, no, no.
That's good.
I haven't learned anything on that one.
You'll keep things interesting.
Okay, so the, the direction I'm, I'm looking for today is, first and foremost, is there a preference of the board? As far as the amount of unbalance versus the amount of debt that you would be looking to issue. Understanding that you may not be prepared to make that decision today. We may wanna look at, you know, the rest of the whole and circle back on this discussion, but being that we're here. If we have consensus, I wanna be able to capture it.
Well, let's start with Paul.
Well, no matter which one we do, I prefer the twenty years, because that, I realize we pay more interest, I know you're not looking for that.
It was my next question, so if you wanna answer that at the same time too, that would be fine.
Like I said before, I like having a, a higher fund balance. I do. Um, the four million is kind of where I'm at.
So not, not retaining the, the sixty percent of revenue, but going down to the fifty percent of revenue.
Scenario B.
What's that?
Scenario B.
Yes, yes. Oh, you want us to say what scenario? I'm scenario B.
Yeah, that works, that works.
So. Okay, I'm, I'm, now I'm lost, which isn't unusual, but.
So.
You hold my hand.
How about we can get you there?
Under, under scenario B, you're, 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 uh, less debt, which means more fund balance.
Correct, yes.
That's what I don't want, so you're saying you don't wanna hold on to fund balance, well, you just pick B, which is opposite of what you said.
I know, I know.
That's why I was confused then.
But my, here's my problem, and I'll be honest, and when I look at the debt service number, we jump, uh, a hundred thousand dollars in debt service. Yes, I wanna keep it fund balances. So, yeah, I am partial to scenario D, however, I don't know, you start five point four million and four, and then I look at that bottom number, total interest paid. That's what kinda.
So you're between B and C, kind of.
B and D.
B and D, wow, you're really.
I'm still at the twenty years on both. I gotta chew it over in my head a little more, I can't.
And so, a- as a reminder, we had the, the three options that I showed earlier. One of them had us keeping thirty five percent of fund balance, one keeping fifty, the other keeping sixty percent, uh, compared to revenue. We don't have scenarios up there that show us the thirty five percent. Scenario A and B is at fifty percent, scenario C and D is at sixty percent. So scenario C and D, we would retain about one point four million dollars in excess fund balance to be used for other things. And still staying above that, that maximum threshold that the O S A recommends.
That's C and D.
That's C and D, scenario A and B gets us to that maximum threshold that O S A recommends, but there's still a variance there. It's thirty five to fifty percent, right? We don't have to keep fifty percent, we can dip below that. It comes down to the, what are you comfortable with, with doing? Um, so, exactly, scenario A and B uses more fund balance, scenario C and D uses less fund balance, um, so that's where we're.
One, one thing before we go through this, when I was voting for this, uh, redevelopment, or the development, uh. Remodeling of the thing, I was using the numbers of thirty five percent and fifty percent.
So you're using A and B.
I was always using A and then thirty five percent, which is not even on, off the chart. And C and D is actually new to me since the remodeling part. So, no matter what, I'll be on A and B, period.
Are you done, Paul?
A and D?
A and B. I have fifty percent, because that's the number when I was voting on it. Of, you know, doing this, those are the two numbers that were given to me, one that's not on the chart, and then the fifty percent. I hate paying interest.
I'm sorry to give you a split decision of, of B and D, but that's.
You're being honest of whatever you're saying, so. This is.
Julie?
When I first read this over, fifty percent just popped into my mind, that's just kind of an even, even compromise and even figure. I do like a shorter term loan, because I don't wanna pay interest. I would rather bite it in the beginning and get done with it. And when I saw that we were eliminating debt in twenty six, I'm curious as to what interest rate we're paying on that. What interest rate we earn on money that we have in savings. Whenever, and and the only experience I have is, of course, my own family. When you take out a loan, I want it for the shortest amount of time, I want to unload whatever funds I have that are earning a low percent interest. If I'm earning three percent interest and I'm paying three percent interest, dump it toward the loan. I, I want to pay it off as quickly as possible. But I also realize that in this situation, I have to maintain funds for the county. I'm at, I would like to take out as minimal amount of money. Use what we have available based on what interest rate we're earning, how much interest rate we'd have to pay. How soon we can attain some money, which will have paid up loans in twenty twenty six. I would like to go with scenario A, and maybe even take out less of a loan, fund it a little bit more. I'm between the fifty and sixty percent.
Andrew, do we know how much we did make, 'cause it's not big on an investment committee lately, it's not a big number that we've been making.
Just switch some over, that's supposed to be doing.
Well, that, and it's, it's changing now, because now rates are going up, just like they are there, they're doing it on the investment side too, so they're comparable.
Did you move the, did you combine your money with hospital funds and move it all into, or hasn't that?
We're working towards that, yeah, yeah, yep, but that has been approved, you do that.
What was it last year relatively to like what the bond rate would have been? What did we get last year?
So, I, our, our interest rate that we got on the refunded bond was about point eight percent.
I was.
It was very, very, very low.
No, I meant, on the interest we earned.
On the interest, yes.
Oh, it was point eight.
No, no, that's on the bond that we issued, because that was one of Julie's questions.
Oh.
Existing one that we have.
Sorry.
The average interest on the existing investments that we have on this.
It was still, it was closer to like one point something then, because we had some older ones that were at two, two and a half. But now the ones that we've been purchasing lately, I mean, that changes all the time, we're at the point oh eight, point oh five, that kind of thing. Because that's what the rates were last year, so. But on some of this here, we pulled off a lot that's, that's being held liquid until it's decided here, so that we know what we can invest. Too, so right now, um.
Because certainly, you know, the way that we do investment, as we transition to this more managed investment portfolio. Things are gonna change, but the way that we've historically invested is we're buying these longer term CDs, which are, I mean, it's twelve months, right? Eighteen months sometimes?
Some, yeah, some are even longer than that.
And, and so, when we lock up that money, that money's not available for us until that, that comes up. So Sharon has been, as things have been coming off, been make, keeping that money liquid, not knowing. What you're gonna decide to do as far as how much cash you want to put towards the project, because we can't then reinvest that money. So that's impacting our investment right now. Ultimately, whatever we're getting back in investment right now, is, is definitely less than what we would be paying in interest, for sure.
Yep.
I would say we were earning about a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year of investments. Was that ballpark?
I, I did. I, like I said. A, no, A or I can be pushed to B just because of what it does to the law, the levy impact. But I'm in the same scenario basically as Julie. I just, I know what we're getting for our investment, it's not great. I voted on a kind of a fifty percent using fund balance kinda mentality and those other numbers get bigger and I like to keep everything.
I like the option of paying things off early.
And the other, the other thing is knowing that we may, it's not ever a certain, but we may sell the, uh, whatever the. Landfill? Which would help with, you know, the fund balance, which we could work with levies and, or other projects, but that's, that's my, that, I'm, I was in the same mentality all the way through, it's just whether, how many dollars per year do you want to go? You know, you wanna use two percentage points of levy? Or the, whatever that other one is, like one point seven or something? You know, whatever that ends up math being two eighty-five versus three forty-eight, you know?
Yeah, I mean, but again, we have the existing debt service that's there, so the actual net increase is.
No, no, I get that. No, I get that. Yep.
You want my opinion?
I do. Well, you skipped yourself here.
Coming back.
That's the advantage of being cherished.
Be some advantage.
I've looked at, I mean, I've looked at this chart or we've talked about this or budget a little bit and I'm, I'm gonna be in that scenario E. Um, just at first when I, when we were talking about, I was a little unkind, I was thinking that fifty percent might be a little lean, but the more we look at some numbers, I think that still leaves us a fairly significant cushion. And obviously, bottom line, total interest, you're looking at, you know, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars difference on interest, that's a significant number, that's a significant number. Um, you know, I maybe could look into the B column, just, and that would be for the, uh, annual debt service. Would be the only factor that would persuade me there, but I, the interest offsets that, I'd have to, you know, like I said, we, we've got also the, the landfill that we're working on, if that sale comes through, that would replenish fund balance as well. So I mean, I think right now scenario E, and I voted for eight and four. You know, that's what I voted for on the project, so that keeps me in line with what I initially thought, so.
Is this gonna take a super majority this way? I, I wanna know that before I get.
Wasn't it three fifths?
Three fifths, right? Yeah, they'll issue the bonds.
That's why I brought that up. I thought this might be an issue.
I really do wanna know that because I'm gonna be on the losing end here, but that's.
You get used to it, Beth.
Danny, I'm starting to get used to it. It's okay. I'm just gonna say this and it's fine. I can do any of those. But I'm gonna go back to this, budgeting is gonna get a heck of a lot harder than it is now. Because every year since I've been a commissioner, it is. You're not gonna be able to say, I need three people, I need two people, I need, I need this, I need that. Because then we're gonna be going this way and I wanna keep our levy. It's like Sharon and I just talked about, people don't say anything if their taxes go up fifty dollars, but if they or go down fifty dollars, but if they go up a hundred, they're on the telephone and we're going through some tumultuous times. People on fixed incomes are struggling right now and inflation is high and are we doing this at the best time? Obviously, we all know that didn't turn out to be so, but, so I worry if we're gonna be going like this, then I don't wanna use that much of our, our fund balance. I wanna keep that so we can do what we're doing with our budgeting. It'll be interesting to look at our budget this year and see how much of that we're using again. So that we can keep an even, you know, we don't wanna be going six percent, eight percent, right? Do we? That, that's, that's, that's my thinking on that and that's why I, I am kinda with Paul. I worry about using that money that we've built up for so long and we've operated as a county for a long time this way and it's worked. So, that's my thought. I, you know, I can go, I understand what everyone's saying, but that's my fear and that's what we're gonna have to discuss, I think.
The answer, one of your, I think the fund balance we're intending to use is out of these numbers are like for this year. Correct? I, I mean, the fund balance that we're looking at to use in budget for twenty-twenty-three is, is not in these cash fund balances that we're identifying here, correct?
Well, no, it is. It's all.
It's all fund balance.
Okay, we're. So, so if.
Didn't have any of that split out.
No, because if we use fund balance, if we say we're gonna get down to fifty percent and then we use fund balance in the budget next year, we're dipping below fifty percent.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, that, and, and that's your decision. That's a fine decision to make because again, we have that range to work within.
Well, we still have fifteen percent.
But the, I'm just saying, the budgeting is gonna get a heck of a lot tougher because I've watched for years as we've had this to fall back on and I've called it good financial planning, that we've had that. And now we're willing to take fifty percent of that money and put into, when we're looking at what, three point two percent interest. And nobody, so you, be clear, nobody likes to pay interest. I mean, that's just not. Our county is in a different shape than other counties. We don't have a lot of, uh, we don't have a lot of debt. And, and that's been because of the way we've sold. That's my, you know, I'm fine, but what are we gonna do with the next five years? That's what you worries me. So I will wanna see how it's gonna affect the levy, what have we got coming up? You're talking about capital projects. Are they included in here?
I mean, what's included in here is the, the major facility model.
So there's capital projects coming, other ones too? So, you know, those are all things that I think we need to talk about.
Can you, can you send us this after today, this particular one? Cause I may wanna look back.
We have.
Did we get that one?
Yeah.
That's right here.
Yep, it's through.
At least I did, sometimes I get.
It was Andrew's thing.
But I didn't get Andrew's, did we get Andrew's?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
That's the part I missed when I looked at it. I mean, I know I got all this.
It's in there. Keep going down.
Yeah, I saw that one.
That's the one Paul wanted.
Oh, my slides are not in there, but all those tables.
Your slides are not in here.
But the tables are all in the R B A.
These are here, I know.
Yep.
The slides he had earlier about how much and.
But the table, those tables are all in the R B A.
Okay.
The, the tables and slides are just right on.
So the tables, that's the ones I looked at, I don't know, they're different.
Alright, so that's my concern. I mean, I think everybody's on the same page, but that's just my concern that we have to think.
And so. It's a, it's a concern, but it's just like, like I said, I'm.
But then Danny, what are we gonna cut?
But we.
Said we don't have to cut something when they budget, cause we'll have to, or we're gonna be going.
We're not also taking in account the C, CIT hundred thousand that is there and then hopefully the reallocation of the, uh, E D A hundred and fifty thousand. That's what I'm hoping to gather that money so it doesn't have as much of an impact. Or we use it for dollars we need versus maybe.
I find that when, when I have a reason to save and a purpose, then I tighten the belt and I would hope that.
Are all you employees listening?
Yeah, are they all listening? Because if you want something, you know you have to pay for it, then you have a purpose.
I guess my point Julie is, and I agree with you.
Sure.
But the cost of doing business has gone up in the last couple of years. Inflation is eight percent. Fuel is up, that means road repair is gonna be up. I mean, every, we're not going this way, we're going up, so.
Well, we could pick a number that's four point five million.
Oh, yeah.
Or, you know, I mean.
There's something in between.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could do something like that too.
We're, yeah, we're not, we're not tied to these specific numbers. We can do anything. And we could bond the whole eleven million dollars if you want to.
The pigs flying.
Timmy got your red pen over there right now.
I didn't say we're doing that.
Only tricky thing, if we do go up to four point five, then fifteen years will be out for sure because that'll go up to four hundred thousand. You know, a fifteen, you know.
You're like fifteen years versus twenty.
So.
Your fifteen year loan would be, debt service would be closer to four hundred thousand or something.
Yes.
Ballparking it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta move, but I'm just throwing an opener to that.
So here's what I'll suggest as next steps, you know, I, I'll have another conversation with Kirk to see where they're at with their planning process and determine if they anticipate uh, issuing bonds in twenty-twenty-three, um, and if they're looking to be closer to twenty-twenty-four, maybe encourage them to do it in twenty-twenty-four. Um, and then, so then we'll know what our timing needs to be in order to move this process through. If we do need to issue in twenty-twenty-two, that timeline does start to get a little bit tighter for us. That being said, next week we're having a work session solely devoted to the budget where a big portion of the discussion is gonna be about the use of fund balance and how that's impacting our, our proposed levy increase for next year. That will help us continue on with the discussion that we're having today. Through that discussion, I think we'll then be able to circle back and make some final decisions on how much are we looking to use here? And all of this timing's working out pretty nicely where we have all this information together. We'll be able to, to make those decisions. So I think when we get to the point of approving our preliminary budget, we would also at that point be ready to approve, um, at least in concept, how much of a bond we wanna do. If we do need to move faster on developing that capital improvement plan and going through that process because the hospital is in all likelihood gonna issue in twenty-twenty-three, then what I would suggest is that we do that anticipating a higher bond issuance, you know, we can say five million dollars is the number, it's less than, you know, the C and B that we have on, or the C and D that we have on there. But as Chuck had mentioned, we just need to identify a not to exceed amount. So we can go up to that then. We don't have to do that. We can do it knowing that we're gonna likely come in under it, but that way, we can get the ball rolling and move through that process while at the same time we're making the decisions on exactly how much we wanna issue. Does that sound fair to everyone?
Can, can Sharon give us some ideas too as to, uh, you say now you're not purchasing these one-year secure locked-in CDs, how much money of that is available that could be put toward this before we reinvest?
That is this money.
That is all.
That's what's in front of you.
That's, this is.
All this.
Yeah, that's all our reserves.
Yeah, that's not in addition to this.
Okay.
Chuck, if you could look into your crystal ball. And, and we're not gonna hold you to this, that's, that's not my point, but.
But it'll come out of the fees if you're wrong.
Are we operating under contingency?
But the, the interest rate right now, three point two five three, if you were a had a crystal ball that was a little fuzzy even, six months from now, do you, do you think that's going to change significantly? A quarter point, half point, three quarter point?
Uh, my, uh, my guess would be that it'll, it'll be somewhat higher. Emphasize guess, uh, somewhat higher, but it, but the, let's say the, the rate of increase will not be. Was that a secondary? I don't know. Will not, well, i- i- in the first six months of this year, at least on our borrowing side, it really jumped a lot. Jumped, uh, about a percent and a quarter, the rate.
How long is this interest rate locked in?
Oh, for the life of the bond.
But, but in just conversation, if we don't make a decision today, a month from now, two months from now.
It'll be whatever the interest rate is.
It's the day of the decision.
No, the, is it the day of the decision or the day the bond is issued?
The day that the bond is sold.
So it could vary between now and then.
Yeah. We take, we take bids and, and, uh, that locks in the interest rates and the bonds are closed.
Well, I don't.
And you get the money, but, uh, but if I had, if I had to, I suppose. Prognosticate a little bit, I would say that the rates will be higher. The rate of increase will not be as high as it's been the first, let's say the first seven months of this year.
As our investment interest rate kept pace with the bond, I mean, there, you know, I mean, some of this stuff, it's, uh, you know, the bonds cost more, but your investments gain more, so it, it buffers the rating.
But it'll never equal.
No, cause you don't have as much.
No.
Yeah, but.
No, I meant they'll never equal.
I'm ready to move along, is everybody else? I'm, I've got a headache. My brain is like.
You have a what?
My brain is like oatmeal from all this.
Keep your grandkids away, they'll start trying to eat out your brain then, huh? No kids eat oatmeal anyway.
So we don't need any motion then for today, we're going to pretty much table this until a work session.
We're gonna have another session.
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna be a continued discussion.
This budget will be interesting.
Have a good idea though.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you coming on today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, thanks Chuck.
Administrator's report.
I will be very brief.
Really?
The first thing I had was that, um, we do have the budget work session next week for the three commissioners who aren't on the budget committee. You have a full copy of the budget if you choose to dive into it with the changes that, uh, the budget committee has made. Um, on the top, there is a, a summary of the expenses per of the different budgets. If you wanna just look at that, that gives you a pretty good overall idea of where things are at, uh, as well as the proposed property levy, uh, property tax levy is, uh, in that same initial packet as well. Um, for those of you who don't have a binder in front of you, it's the information that I had sent out last week, so you already have that. The, um, presentation for that, I'm hoping to get out tomorrow. I wanted to see what the discussion today was because that's gonna shift some of the numbers that are in. That's that. And then as a reminder, September sixth is Labor Day and the county offices will be closed.
Committee reports.
I go.
Okay.
Steve, Steve, before you go, so we're closed on a Monday again and that's sometimes caused us issues for that Tuesday commissioner meeting, cause our commissioner meeting is right over the next day.
Cause we can't get our questions answered.
Yeah.
So the packet will be out on Thursdays as normal. I'd be more than happy to call you on Friday.
I, I mean, I don't know what that whole conversation was about, but we're, we're good.
The, the big discussion on the sixth is going to be, we're gonna have our health insurance broker in to talk to us about the, the process that we've gone through with a recommendation on, um, group health insurance.
What is this sheet that came in our packet? Some city of Union Valley and city of Richfield?
So there's a, a requirement on an annual basis that the cities who have TIF districts that still have money in those funds provide a just annual disclosure and a notice to the county board.
What does TIF?
Tax increment financing. It's a, it's a method that cities have in order to be able to create a special fund for economic development within a certain geographic area. What happens is that the, um, that.
It's like a capital again.
Yeah, there's an equalized assessed value of that property or that group of properties, that amount is capped. And then any increase in the equalized assessed value, the increment, uh, the, any tax dollars that would go towards that increment then go into this special fund which can be used for certain activities in that geographic area. So that is a report on the existing or the retired TIF districts that still have money in those accounts. Um, that, how much money is in those accounts? It's an annual disclosure, that's all it is. There's no action that's required by the county.
Steve, did you go yet? Or did they stop you and then we got off on something?
County ditch fifteen and Dassel, we had that meeting on Tuesday the second. Um, we pretty much talked about that at regular meeting here. Uh, we did have a budget meeting on the eleventh. Uh, the, Sharon ran away, but it was Danny, myself, Andrew and Sharon. And, um, just kinda to look at, discuss a lot more in depth what we talked about here today. In different scenarios. Um, and other than that, then we're really the two biggest, the county fair was all that week, um, and seemed to go well. It was busy out there. It was happy with everything. Um, so other than that, that's about it.
I had a, uh, Norfolk, uh, Watershed meeting, so that wasn't, uh, real eventful, not a lot. Discuss there, everything's kinda in, and, uh, just kinda cruise control in terms of what they're doing from past stuff. Um, had the budget meeting, I'll be honest, so going through this whole budget process, I thought, I thought Andrew and the department heads did a really good job understanding our situation and I thought it was a little easier than what I thought it was going to be, even though we still have decisions, but I do wanna commend that they did a good job in terms of understanding that we're remodeling and doing all this stuff. And I think Andrew did a good job of letting them know where the rest of us were at before we started talking, which actually helped us.
He had his canned statement for each one that came in.
Popped their bubble when they walked in.
Green bean can, right? But no, but anyway, I thought.
Oh, I agree.
I really appreciated the way the whole committee worked through it, you know? With Steve trying to keep the, stay the course and then with Sharon and the whole thing. You know, with Steve trying to keep the, stay the course and then with Sharon and the whole thing, so.
Thank you.
That, that doesn't mean we're gonna love it.
No. Nope.
Go ahead, let's pull through this.
At a regular meeting on the second, then on the second that evening, we had the ditch meeting at five thirty in Dassel at the historical building. It was very informative. We had nice visits with residents, uh, in- informational. The next morning, uh, Paul and I were seated here for our aquatic invasive species meeting. That committee is working through um, what I consider maybe some ideas for trying to streamline the funding process. The A I S director is working on the budget. And some changes may need to be made in regard to how the meeting is conducted, note-taking, whose responsibilities are what and documentation of minutes. So there's some work to be done with that particular committee and Paul may expand on that if he so chooses. Then August three through the seventh, Plissot County Fair, saw many of you folks there. Beth, Paul, Andrew and myself worked the American Bingo stand. That was fun. We had a good crowd.
It was fun.
It was.
Andrew's, Andrew's a good caller, isn't he? Did a good job.
Yeah, you had to call all two hours?
Two and a half hours.
Or did you stay, did you call the whole time?
Well, no, not after we left. I, I got to, I'd have to do the full five.
No, that was, that was a fun evening, so I, I enjoyed that. Um, then today now, the sixteenth, a regular meeting. I believe, is it a week from today then that we will have a work session?
Week from today.
Twenty-third, because there are five Tuesdays, but it will be the twenty-third, we'll have a work session. The picnic, uh, the county picnic is scheduled for Wednesday, the thirty-first at four thirty at Lady Bird, correct? Okay.
Correct.
We have, I sit on the University of Minnesota Extension Board, Danny and I. And we're gonna be losing our crop naturalist person. He's taking another career path. Uh, so there will soon be a hiring committee formed to replace that full-time.
I would think you could do that.
Position.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think he's selling, see?
Make some big money.
Person. He's taking a little different career path. And I believe that is my report.
Done quick.
Yep, there you go. Your turn.
Follow her lead.
Of course, we had the, the ditch meeting, but.
Yep.
We've already covered that. The A I S meeting, the only thing I'm gonna add to what Julie said is something that I think has happened in the past there is if you apply for a grant, they try and see that you get the grant. Um, and I'm just gonna use real quickly, Lake Ripley has seventy thousand dollar project, but they can only get a certain amount of funds because we approve all these funds. Um, and then they're not used. So I think they have to kinda think about, well, maybe not everybody gets approved every year. So that we can throw more at a different.
Get approved every year.
Oh, yes.
Well, they always do.
You put in one, you're gonna get approved.
So you're, you're thinking maybe you should go by need and stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Or let them build it up over a few years. We've got a big project we'd like to do, but it's gonna take three years for us to accumulate the funding, to at least have that option.
Yep. So, you know, when Julie said a little retooling, I think we, we do need to think about how we do those a little differently.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but they didn't a lot of times use all the ones, right?
Manuel has been granted uh, twelve thousand five for the last three years, but we haven't had uh, permission to spray from the D N R.
Hmm.
So we can't treat. So there goes twenty, twelve five back into the pot. Okay, well, then all of a sudden now, if we're like Ripley and you got a seventy thousand dollar project, we still can only apply for twelve fifty. Yeah, we've put thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand back in there over the years, so. You know, we just need to rethink it a little bit. I don't think it's a big deal, but we do need to rethink it a little bit, how we do it. So.
So does that stay in the Meeker County pot then for A I S or does that go back?
It hasn't been going back. We, we were.
So it just keeps accumulating these dollars that were taxed somewhere else. It just sits there and it's not doing anything.
Right, so.
It's already been taxed.
Yeah, that, it's, it's not taxed. This is pass-through dollars.
No, taxed from somewhere.
Yeah.
It's all the same, yeah.
Yeah, A, A I S, we have three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in fund balance there. They've been overspending their allotment year over year for the past few years or budgeting to do so in order to spend that down and that's something that we're seeing again this year. I think for twenty-three, they have seventy-six thousand dollars over the allotment in order to spend that fund balance.
We get about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Two twenty, something like.
It's based on the number of parking spaces at each landing.
Oh, really?
And, and the number.
That is strange.
Combination of the two.
Combination of the two.
Because the idea is the more parking spaces you have.
More people.
Yeah, sure.
Kind of odd.
Yes. Then on Thursday, I had a Prime West meeting, a couple of things there. Uh, the Red Lake Treatment Center community is uh, getting a reinvestment grant of one point two million. Um, and this is something that Prime West is really good at. They looked at that um, area and they said they had a request from them for this money. First thing they did was, can you sustain it? You know, if we help you get this started, do you have everything in place to be able to continue to run it? And they have a very good setup there. It's gonna help a lot of folks right there that aren't getting into treatment because there's no place to go. Um, and it will be culturally designed so that they'll, they'll have the right functions within this. So um, that's a very good thing. Um, and then they gave us a, a little bit of an update on the D H S procurement. He was predicting last Thursday, we didn't get a decision by the judge last Thursday. So we know that the judge has a big um, uh, trial coming up, murder trial. So we thought maybe he'd try and issue his decision prior to that, but we're in a position that, you know, it's wait and see. That's about all we can. Um, and an insurance meeting, which I'm not gonna go into because we'll cover that.
Talking about on the sixth.
We're covering that at there, so um, then last Friday, the Meeker Memorial Golf Tournament was followed by the Canvas Board doing their job. But that, the Canvas Board, Danny, kinda turned out to be in- interesting, didn't it?
You mean the Canvas Board was first, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, gotcha, yeah.
You know, we learned a little bit about why you come in and sign and um, what the importance is and what we were looking at. So we had a good discussion and that was kind of a education.
That after the golf tournament?
Before, I said, the, the golf tournament was prior, or after, so. Then the golf tournament, uh, this year, uh, it was announced that I'm not welcome back on the team next year. I, I am heard about that. Yeah, right now.
Well, make some putts.
Are you missing your putts? I'm pretty.
These is because of your golf game. I was thinking of going somewhere else.
Our, our partner's child did fantastic and we think his other child would also do fantastic. Trying to, someone has to go.
So I'm gonna be forming a new team next year.
I can come and putt, I can putts.
But um, then um, I had a chance to uh, buy tickets for giveaways.
Yep.
Um, and the first giveaway was a paddleboard that Beth had donated. And Andrew was the first person who got to draw out of the tickets. Guess whose name Andrew drew?
I'm sitting.
Really?
Andrews. So, so about three, four prizes later, they had a two hundred and fifty dollar Visa gift card and a Pizza Hut gift card and something else and they asked me to draw and guess whose name I drew?
No.
Andrews, again, oh.
So he was being booed.
So he says, I get this picture from him.
Of course.
Guess who won the paddleboard? And then I won't.
Make sure you do it.
Then I get a message from, I won't read it, I can't, it's.
So now you're really gonna be looking for a leg.
You had a good day.
I had a very good day.
Yeah, no, we had a lot of fun. It was a good tournament. We, we actually placed tied for fourth or fifth.
Yeah.
Tied for fourth.
And I got a text from the Alex that I sponsored saying thank you very much. That was fun. So you must have been kind of.
She teaches kindergarten?
Is it a gal?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was a guy, see?
She's a kindergarten teacher here and.
Anyway, she had fun, so.
Then on Monday, we had an I T meeting. Um, I think one of the concerns that's gonna be coming up, not for us uh, alone, I think for everybody, is the lack of carriers for cybersecurity.
Insurance.
Insurance, and, and that's probably gonna drive rates a, a direction we don't wanna see. But we kinda knew about this. I believe A M C has put together a committee that they are trying to work on this and what we're gonna do, but that's a big issue with cyber security. That could cost the county.
So make sure you complete your no before training.
Well, I just completed mine yesterday, cause I was behind one.
Oh, boy, when are we gonna wrap this up?
Anything else?
Uh, other than, does Legion still serve in tacos on Tuesdays?
I believe they are, last I heard, so.
Build your own?
Build your own.
Barb.
They bring you the meat and chicken.
Barb put out that ditch meeting for September twenty-seventh at five P M.
Yeah, I think I was open any time.
Already, that C D fifty.
So I didn't have much. I had um, Meeker County uh, shelter fundraising. Cory does such a good job on that. We're doing our bowling tournament and our French toast breakfast. I'm looking for some gift cards if anybody wants to uh, donate any ten dollar gift cards so we can have some drawings. Uh, and the, if anybody wants to sponsor, the letters are going out or are out.
They're all out.
And the sponsor is what, two fifty?
One fifty, you get your little on the back of the shirt.
Little name on the back of the T-shirt. Schifelbein Farms, everybody would see it when you're headed in a certain direction.
Yeah, they could go right to the feedlot where all the animals get slaughtered later on.
That'd be a good lesson for everyone. Schmidt seed, Schmidt seed, just putting it out there. Um, I did not get to the Prime West board meeting, however, I was at Prime West Finance. Um, then I had a finance meeting at the hospital, so I didn't, I did Zoom, but I think Paul hit most of the stuff. They did hire, they brought the medical record person in-house. They used to uh, lease it out, but they're saving about fifty-nine thousand dollars a year by doing that. Um, I think they're hiring a, another pharmacist. They're, they're struggling to keep those because of the remote work, like I said before, and they do uh, they can get New York wages sitting at home, so. Um, and the Red Lake grant request, which is a good deal, one point one million for the treatment center. And they're gonna put on some more staff, et cetera, so. That's what I had there. And then I had a, a finance meeting at the hospital. Um, we're working on a policy for, they're spending a lot of money for staffing right now because we just are in such need of it. Um, they're doing, they're putting a policy, he wanted to do some bonuses, retention, et cetera, et cetera, and earlier we decided that we should have a policy in place then. We can't just say, you know, this month we're gonna give you. So there's a policy in place for how many years everybody's gonna get. Um, I think with the new wage, the lower people are going up, like the people in the doing the cafeteria or cleaning and stuff, we're not gonna have anybody making less than sixteen something an hour. More competitive. And everywhere else, there's, everybody's going across the board and getting some raises. So there's gonna be a lot of money spent again on that because it's what's happening in healthcare. It's just trying to get somebody and we have a lot of travelers. That's not cheap. So, um, he's constantly working on that. We've had to divert O Bs at times or trying to get past that, get some trainings, so. They're working hard, but it's a struggle.
I see that in cities on the news today that there's a potential war strike up there from the nursing association.
Well, I think.
I think it is, isn't it?
One of their problems.
Do they give notice?
I, I don't know, I think.
I think because of the shifts and the longer shifts they have to work because there's no staff and and, and on, it's just, it's kinda scary times.
And Duluth.
Is it Duluth?
And Duluth.
Was it? Well, they were part of that too.
Something like that. It was kinda weird, it's like, oh.
So that's what I had. I did that much. So I spent the weekend with my kids, so. Anybody else have anything?
Are you grilling this year at the picnic?
I can, I, I mean.
Danny and I are there to help you.
And I will order the supplies.
You have to wash my hands.
Legion. And then you will have her pick them up.
Oh, are you, it'll be.
I won't.
I was gonna ask you, are we getting, are we getting a report on sentenced to serve?
Yes, September twentieth.
Because I've noticed not a lot of people out working.
Yes, yeah, so.
See that, I see her doing a lot of things by herself.
It's exactly what I asked them to come and report on is, is usage pre-pandemic. Up to now, what the trends that they're seeing are. And so, yep, September twentieth, they'll be here talking about sentenced to serve.
Do we pay for that picnic after or before?
I, I think last year I paid for it and then I just give you a bill.
I pay now.
Are you a double A or triple A star?
Yeah, yeah.
Now and later.
So look for a motion to close the meeting. Let's just do that. Thank you, everyone. Good for you.
Very good.
So are those burgers that we made from, are those Henry's or Apert's?
I get them from Henry's, but they're cloud burger. They made, they're called cloud burger.